Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revelle. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Mayor Hagerty.
Here. All right, we have Quorum and hopefully a few others will join us shortly. Okay. In terms of announcements, I would like to put out two congratulations. One to both theater-related here. One to Fleetwood Jordan Theater that received 11 nominations from the Black Theater Alliance in the Ira Aldridge Awards. These awards honor African-Americans who achieve excellence in the theater, dance, performing, and technical arts. So, pretty exciting here for Evanston and for Fleetwood Jordan Theater. The awards will be announced on October 23rd, so we wait to find out. We don't have to wait to find out, though, that an ETHS grad, Lena Waith, received the -- she was the first black woman graduate of ETHS to earn an Emmy last night for outstanding writing on a comedy series. Pretty, pretty, pretty -- we're all really, really proud of this ETHS grad. It was for Masters of None. It was for the episode Thanksgiving, which is a pretty acclaimed episode. And she had a co-winner there, Aziz Anari. So, those are two things to be happy about. I also wanted to issue a proclamation tonight, and I'd like us all to think about the importance of mental health, our mental health, the mental health of our family and our friends, and that there are a lot of people in this world that struggle with that. And I think if we all think about people that we've known in our life, there are some that this has been a real challenge, and some that it's actually led to suicide. And this month is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I'd like to bring light to that. We have three recipients of this proclamation that we're going to give. And if you're here, I'd like you to come on up to the top and I'll present. And I'm going to read this proclamation. It's pretty short. Josephina Alvarez. Are you here, Josephina? All right, come on up. And Josephina is the Board President of the Mental Health America of North Shore. Okay. Amber Bond. Amber's here. Is the Mental Health America of the North Shore. And Linda Stevens, who's with Suicide Prevention Services. Thank you, Linda. I'll just come around and read this and present this to you guys.
Where do you want to go?
I will stand right here, and you guys can be -- all right, let's see. This is working. So, first off, thank you for everything that you guys do. It is an honor on behalf of Evanston to present this proclamation for the work that you do to help so many people here in our area. National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September 2017. Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which helps promote resources and awareness around the issues of suicide prevention, it teaches how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, background, and is the third -- and this is hard to believe. It is the third leading cause of death among young people. And whereas Evanston, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, group leaders, parents, as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local and national organizations like Suicide Prevention Services are in the front lines of a battle that too many still refuse to discuss in public, now therefore I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim September 2017 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Evanston and encourage all citizens to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. Thank you for everything that you guys do.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, all of you. Thank you. (INAUDIBLE). You had us. (INAUDIBLE). Thank you. Okay. With that, Mr. City Manager, do we have any public announcements?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Two announcements. First, I'd like Tracy Alden, the President of the Evanston Fourth of July Association, to come up. Tracy asked to come this evening, give a report on the success of this year's activities and make a few presentations.
I did. Thank you very much, Mayor, City Manager, Council members. My name is Tracy Alden, President of Fourth of July Association. And we had our annual meeting a month ago in August, at which time I presented what we call our President's Freedom Award. And I'm recognizing the different playground sites and activities that take place on the morning of the Fourth of July. And it's a cooperative effort. It involves the schools. It involves the high school, District 65, and the Parks and Recreation Department. I saw Bob back there, but I wanted to recognize the specific site coordinators. At our meeting, I was able to recognize some of the people that were in attendance that evening, including City Manager Wally Babekwitz, who has been site coordinator at Raymond Park. We also recognized Chris Lowry and Jill Baker Oda at Baker Park that day. And now today, I wanted -- and I didn't think Joanie was going to be -- is she here? But I wanted to recognize the other people, and I think some may be here in attendance as well. Kenneth Cherry with Fleetwood Jordan Center. Let me -- so, we just -- because you weren't able to make it at our event, I wanted to personally thank you for your support for the Fourth of July, and as well as Anne Marie Heiser. Is she here as well? Kenneth, this is yours.
I'll take Anne Marie's.
You'll take Anne Marie's. Thank you. The other people, Joan Ducaille, who runs the program at Evanston Township High School. And I think I got -- oh, Lincoln Wood, Jack Mortel, and Craig Lickie at Willard School. I believe that's everybody. And I just wanted to make sure that they were properly recognized. It is a major component of the Fourth of July events. It's been going on for almost 100 years now, and I just wanted to say thank you for your support, as always. And the support of the Parks and Rec -- where's Bob back there? Give a little wave. Where are you, Bob? Oh, there you are. All right. So, that's all. Thank you very much for the time and opportunity. Save the date, July 4th, 2018. All right.
And we have a theme tonight about Never-Ending Summer. I'd like to ask our Director of Parks and Recreation, Community Services, Lawrence Hemingway, to come up. We are T-minus seven days from the National Recreation and Park Association announcing the winners of this year's Gold Medal Award, and they'll be doing that next Tuesday morning in New Orleans. So, our fingers are crossed for that great information, but Director Hemingway's here to talk a little bit about our activities this past summer.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green. Today, I just want to give you a quick overview of what a great summer that we've had, with a few numbers and just a highlight of some of our activities that took place. Here, this first slide is a little bit -- you know, here's some of the numbers, just so that you get a chance to see. I don't need to read the numbers, but you can see the amount of beach tokens, the number of individuals enrolled in our camps, the various number of programs offered, over 700 various programs, number of dog beach tokens, theater tickets sold for the Fleetwood Jordan Theater that you just -- that's being recognized later on. And we hired 340 seasonal staff and issued over 220 park permits and hired over 140 beachfront staff. On the lakefront, you see here's more details about the activities on the lakefront. 581 tokens given to our nonprofit partners, and along with 931 actual individual beach tokens given out to families and individuals. We received over $10,000 in donations to help us as part of that scholarship program. Additional stats there, number over 145 visitors. We've had 15 swim rescues, four of them that included our new boats. And we helped the lifeguard -- I mean, we helped the Coast Guard with eight missing persons searches. Additional information there, you see Sandcastle Program, which was done at the beach, and then some of the various activities, including paddleboard, yoga, tubing, kayaking, fishing, and more. For our teenagers, very specifically, we had our drop-in program over at Mason Park, which is a staple of our teen programs. We also offer quite a bit of free activities for teenagers: basketball, volleyball, roller skating, ice skating, as well as every Monday after the Fourth of July, it was free to go to the beach for teenagers. You also see where we placed our soccer pitches. Robert Crown Community Center, which actually had a turf surface, because it was placed on the cement and behind the building, and we put down artificial turf and tested out surf this summer, along with James Park and Twigs Park. And again, we gave out 874 tin punch teen beach passes, so free access to the beaches. At the farmer's market, we average over 7,000 visitors. The market itself, from an analysis done two years ago, it generates an estimated $4.3 million to the local economy throughout its season being open. We have kids' activities there. This coming Saturday will be our Truck to Table fundraiser event. We have 18 homegrown local artists, whose art has been on display all summer, throughout the summer. We have a total of 58 vendors, and our Link Card, which provides up to $25 in matching funds per qualified visitors. And the last, but very important, we were recognized again as one of the best farmers' market in the Chicagoland area by Making it Better magazine. Our newest facility, the Gibbs Morrison Cultural Center, our recording studio is open and open for business. First Slice, everybody's familiar with, you know, operates the Pie Cafe there. We specialize in cultural and social programming at that facility. Very successful jazz event on July 14th that featured Markwell Jordan and the Players. And the building is obviously open for rental, and we hosted its first summer camp, which had 25 participants. Our special recreation for our special needs population, five athletes competed in singles competition on June 4th. One of those athletes continued to go on and win a gold medal and will compete in the district this October. For 18 athletes further participated in 24 events in Bloomington, and five gold medals, three silver, and three bronze were won. We also had a very, very special day here about a month ago, where our participants were able to go visit the Michael Phelps Foundation. For those who know, Michael Phelps has won more medals in United States history, regardless of sport. He came by. Our swimmers were there. He was present. They had a chance to meet him. And they were coached by Michael Phelps, along with Grant Hackett and Allison Schmidt, all Olympic gold medal winners. And then our -- the NU Women's Swim Team Meet and Greet was also a very highlight for our special needs participants. You see, that's Michael Phelps up there in the upper-right picture. Summer food program, we talk a lot about that during the summer. You have a chance to see. There are almost 30,000 lunches served, almost 10,000 breakfasts served during the summer. It doesn't matter how old, how young, you come in, we feed you, regardless of qualifications. The locations that hosted the summer food program, there you are, as well as some of our partner sites, McGaw YMCA, Kingsley, and Oakton Elementary Schools. Program, we started on June 12th and we ended our summer camp season on August 18th. The Fleetwood Jordan Theater had a tremendous summer. Three outstanding plays, in which you just heard they'll be recognized. They've been recognized for 11 nominations. Yellow Man, Sweet, and The Last Day at Emerson's Grill was the last play of the summer. We had an old-school R&B concert, along with Jazz Meets Delta Concert -- Jazz Meets Delta Blues concert. Both of those events were sold out, and the participants who came, we had a great time at those events. Our Black Tie Gala, we had a special performance by Lady Day at Emerson's Grill with the jazz combo. And once again, our 11 nominations for the annual Black Theater Alliance. Some of the special events that took place this summer, the World Arts -- first annual World Arts and Music Festival took place the weekend of July 15 through the 17th. We had a record number of vendors for this event. 70 vendors, nine specific food vendors, and six food producers performed or participated in this year's event. We had 16 individual performances by various artists. The Starlight Concert Series, which is also one of our summer staples, eight concerts, three included food trucks available. And then each of those events, we did the Parks and Rec Department, we did pre-concert events where we were out. If you came out, you would have saw staff out entertaining the public up until the concert started. We did nine movies in the park throughout all of the wards, and we also had those same pre-family or pre-movie events that took place. Community Picnic, which our department helped put on on behalf of the city, took place right here at the Moraine Civic Center on August 20th. This year, we had a partner with the event, the Fifth Ward Planning Committee, which had their own separate event that partnered with us. And again, Streets Alive just celebrated a tremendous day last Sunday at Streets Alive. Our summer youth outreach team, here's their information. You have a chance to see here the number of participants. At the job fair, we had our highest number of private employers this summer, 41, which is great. We had over 1,000 jobs available for the young people to attend. You had 650 kids who ended up with either a summer or year-round job in our program. 41 of the participants qualified for free and reduced lunch, and 50% had previous work experience. We had a six-week junior camp with the Kingian Nonviolence Program. For those who don't know or may new to the council, outreach staff has been certified in Kingian Training, which models the Martin Luther King Nonviolence Approach to Conflict Resolution. We utilize that in each of those staff members, being certified instructors, are allowed to teach the kids these strategies on how to use this nonviolence approach to conflicts. We utilize that with a very specific group this summer, and we're proud to say it worked out extremely well. And we are now trying to work with ETHS High School so that we can use this model to help things going on over at the high school. Oh, last, last, this -- you see the pie graph to your right? It's a pie graph that kind of shows where the participants came from by ward. Our largest participants came from the second ward, who received jobs, followed by the fifth ward, and then the eighth ward. Some of the other activities that took place, our end-of-the-season celebration, we did Theater on Ice National Competition. Our apiary was stalled early spring over at Eccleston. Proud to say that those 40,000 bees are alive and well. They're producing honey. The honey this season was what will help get them through the winter season, and so hopefully by next year, summer, by the end of next summer, we may even be able to harvest some of the honey. We hosted our National Parks and Recreation Month activities, which some folks participated in. We had our special ribbon cutting over in the fifth ward at Twigs Park, thanks to contributions and improvements made by Northwestern University. We did our lecture series sponsored by the Levy Senior Center. And History Comes Alive at our Art Camp, which was a very, very exciting parent. If you talk to any participant there, those parents can't wait to next summer to do that Last, but not least, I can't help but say it every chance I get, next Tuesday, you guys will probably hear me scream from New Orleans when we receive this gold medal award. Again, you're talking about the Emmys, the Academy Awards, the Golden Globe. This is what this is for our profession, and to be a finalist of four out of hundreds and hundreds of thousands of communities, we're one of the top four. We're really, really excited. And so, next Tuesday, we'll find out, or better yet, we'll be receiving that and bringing it back home with us. Are there any questions? Thank you.
That concludes my communications, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Okay, City Clerk, for any announcements and for the -- just for the record. So, while I did the initial roll, and if you can just record the roll, then all Aldermen are here.
Yep. Yeah, I do have a communication. For several weeks, I planned to use the time during tonight's comments to the clerk to present a plan for participatory budgeting. You know, participatory budgeting is something that the Obama White House has championed. We invited Alderman Joe Moore, the 49th Ward, Teacrum from UIC's Cities Institute, as well as Maria Haddon from the Participatory Budgeting Project. Advance notice was provided, and yet Friday afternoon, I was informed that the presentation could not move forward. Within the last year, my predecessor was given, rightfully given, the opportunity to present proposals during two separate council meetings. Once regarding a local entrepreneur, a local apprenticeship program, and then another presentation involving increasing the salary for the clerk's position. I hope the Aldermen, especially the senior Aldermen, who rendered no objection to my predecessor's presentations, afford this office the same opportunity to share with the public during future comments of the clerk. It is without question that comments to the clerk is the easiest way to update the community about the progressive policies that they elected me to pursue, and we shouldn't be making it harder for folks to access that information. The clerk's office will hold a town hall in the future regarding participatory budgeting that will be announced at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, we're going to turn to public comment. I have the sign-in up here, and as you guys know the rule, right? So, if you're not on this sheet and you want to speak, can you put your hand out so I can do the math correctly? Okay, keep your hand up for a second. I got seven. Okay. I got one out there. I got you. Are there two out there? Can you see behind you, Michelle?
Three.
There's three. So, what do we got? Okay. All right. So, what we're going to do in order to get everybody up here, I've got the sign-in for those that have signed in. I'm going to ask Avanda, would you mind taking this out for those folks that didn't sign up? If you can sign your name here. And given the number of people that we have and our rule of 45 minutes total for public comment, we're going to give each speaker two minutes. Okay? I'm going to give you the sign that we keep working on. Today, I'm going to try a new sign. I'm going to say, I'm going to motion my hand, like wrap it up. And that means you got 10 seconds or 15 seconds to get it wrapped up. I do ask, the reason that we do this is we want to be sensitive to everybody in this room and the commitment of your time to be here and to engage in government, as well as the people that are up here at the dais. And we've got obviously two important topics today, affordable housing and economic development to talk about during our city council meeting, and then we actually have a fairly lengthy executive session after this to cover some topics. So, I will, again, I just ask everybody to be respectful, and I will try to manage this well and keep us all to two minutes, and ask that you do the same. If somebody has gotten up and said the same thing that you said, you can pass. That is okay. In fact, people might just cheer. So, with that, the first three speakers that will come up is Helen Gagel, Susan -- Sue Lalambach, and then Ray Friedman. So, Helen, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Helen Gagel. I live at 804 Oakton in the ninth ward. I'm here this evening as a member of the Age Friendly Evanston Task Force. Last June, a year ago in June, the council endorsed our three-year action plan, which was developed by our task force under guidelines established by the World Health Organization and is aimed at making Evanston a more age-friendly city for people of all ages. The research surveys, focus groups, and listening sessions we engaged in as we developed our plan, which is available on the city's website, all pointed to housing, especially affordable housing, as a primary concern. It is also a reason, in some cases, the only reason, that would cause older adults to consider leaving Evanston. So, tonight's discussion is timely, it's appropriate, it's important, and I thank you for taking the time. As the council and this community consider how we can expand access to affordable housing, I propose that we consider the possibilities and benefits of intergenerational housing as a strategy to not only address the need for affordable housing, but also to build stronger community across generations. I believe it is possible in Evanston to create a connected community that is intergenerational, inclusive, equitable, affordable, and replicable. And we have an opportunity here in Evanston to show how that can be done. We are not alone. Cities and towns from the Hudson Valley to Silicon Valley are trying to figure this out. So, there is an opportunity for learning and collaboration. There is opportunity for entrepreneurship. There is opportunity to fashion a multi-sector approach involving the public, private, not-for-profit, education, and service sectors. And in the coming months, our task force will be researching and considering how we can incorporate intergenerational community building here in Evanston and into our affordable housing strategies, and we'll share what we learned with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Sue, and then we've got Ray, and then Susan Chirco.
Great, thank you. My name is Sue Lalambach. I am the manager of advocacy at Connections for the Homeless and Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. I want to thank all of you and city staff for making the topic of affordable housing a priority tonight. We hope that affordable housing will continue to be at the top of the list for the city moving forward. Without enough affordable housing for people at the lower end of the socioeconomic scale, Evanston cannot be the best that it can be, and it cannot reach its full capacity for livability. Over the foreseeable future, affordable housing will be the key to many of the issues that have been under discussion at recent city council meetings. For instance, affordable housing will be key to creating economic equity throughout our community, without which no other type of equity can be sustainable. Affordable housing will be key to bridging the achievement gap. Research shows that stable housing is a necessary ingredient for children to achieve maximum cognitive development, physical health, and academic progress. Affordable housing will be key to decreasing youth violence. Research shows that unstable housing, lack of mobility, and parental stress are direct causes of youth violence. And affordable housing will be key to leveraging the good work being done by the countless nonprofit organizations in Evanston, including those that focus on mental health, domestic violence, disabilities, addiction, child development, racial equity, hunger, senior citizens, youth, and poverty. In January 2017, Connections for the Homeless led human services agencies throughout the region to collaborate on advocacy related to affordable housing, because the lack of affordable housing is harming the clients of all of us. The resulting coalition of 30 agencies plus communities of faith in individuals is called Joining Forces for Affordable Housing, and we ask that the city engage in a renewed Joining Forces for Affordable Housing, and we ask that the city engage in a renewed effort to create more affordable housing, starting quickly with several actions, including making progress toward the Affordable Housing Plan, creating a new plan, and ensuring there's a clear and deliberate plan for implementing the Affordable Housing Fund.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We've got Ray, then Susan Chirco, then Birch Berghardt. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Hagerty. Last week, I spoke about affordable housing in the proposed 16-unit building at 2215 Dempster on behalf of myself and my neighbors. Devon Reed was kind enough to pass out our letter to all city council members. We, the neighbors, posed several questions on some of the reasons that the 16-unit building does not belong on the corner of Dempster and Pittner. We are very disappointed that we've not received even one response. When can we expect some feedback on this issue, which the residents have been discussing for about six months now? I'm very happy to learn that you're planning to speak about affordable housing this evening and hope that you will be announcing that you have decided not to approve this proposed 16-unit building at this location. The neighbors here in the 2nd Ward were looking forward to, on 9/14, our first ward meeting since the summer break, then was canceled the day before. We've not gotten much feedback from our alderman, Peter Braithwaite, on this proposed 16-unit building, except that Peter did say he understands that 99% of the residents are against the project. I don't know how this is helping us. The neighbors need some feedback this week on this issue so that we can prepare for next Monday's council meeting, when you're voting on approving this 16-unit building. We really need some representation from our elected officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. Susan Chirco, then Birch Berghardt, then Rodney Green.
Good evening, and I also add my voice to thanking city staff and the council for recognizing the importance of affordable housing for Evanston. From all our surveys that we did on the Evanston Age Friendly Task Force, and I'm sorry, I should introduce, I'm chair of the task force. Affordable housing was one of the biggest issues that are a problem for older adults. And, you know, the majority of older adults living in Evanston have raised their families here. Many were born here. And then they find themselves in later life, living on fixed incomes. And we know that housing in Evanston is becoming increasingly unaffordable for middle-class families. And of course, that includes not only older adults, but people who live and work in our community, our teachers, you know, city staff, other people as well. So I just really want to add my voice to those who have already spoken and to advocate for policies that will bring affordable housing units into Evanston. I think we need more housing as much as we need additions to the Affordable Housing Fund. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Birch, and then we've got Rodney, and then Irv Chakol. And again, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing people's names. I consistently mispronounce somebody's name, so Birch.
Happens to all of us. Yeah, I also thank you for bringing up this topic tonight, and to the staff for the incredible work that they've been doing on affordable housing issues. I'm board president of Interfaith Action of Evanston. We're mostly known for providing shelter and food to the homeless and the hungry. But we also have got an advocacy task force that is really looking into what we can do to help you all focus on and bring about more affordable housing in Evanston. And especially, well, preferably not just in the 2nd and the 5th wards, but throughout I'm grateful that tonight, we're going to be, I'll be hearing you guys learn from the staff, but also, I really look forward to seeing a plan for the use of the Affordable Housing Fund. We've been watching buyout after buyout, or people using the buyout options for, instead of building affordable units in new developments. And I'd be very interested to see how that is likely to be spent, and that kind of transparency will be very useful. And also, my hat is off to Sue Lollbach and the Joining Forces Group, which I'm part of, and it's becoming a real force.
Great. Thank you, Birch. Rodney Green, then Irv, then Chris Kruger.
Good evening, Mayor, city clerk, council members, and city manager. That's the proper way to be introducing the council when you get up the next time. I come to also support the affordable housing. I do believe that, as you said, we should not allow contractors to come in and pay out instead of paying for affordable housing. There are many seniors in the city who are now on fixed incomes, including myself, who will be, it's kind of hard to pay their mortgages. And I think that you ought to look into this, how are you going to make this equitable for everybody in this community? The middle class, the lower class, and also those who are making ample amounts of money who could also use affordable housing. Secondly, I wasn't going to say anything at first, but I am tired of the present clerk now continuing to jump on me and accuse me of things that I could have or did not do. I don't know how long your council's going to let this go on, but I didn't talk about it beforehand, but I'm going to talk about it now. He wants to disgrace my name. It's time for me to turn around and do the same. If you all do something, I will do something myself. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green. Irv, then Chris Kruger, then Kira Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, city manager, and city clerk. First of all, I'd like to say I'm in favor of affordable housing. But in reading the packet that was part of this meeting tonight, I have a comment and some questions, and I hope the questions are answered in the presentation. One, the first comment is, in the packet, it says that one of the biggest problems of making housing affordable is our high real estate taxes. If we continue increasing our real estate taxes, it's going to make the problem worse. If we increase developer fees, it'll make the problem worse, because developers have to increase the rents to cover those additional fees. The questions I have are, a big gap is shown between supply and demand between, or with Evanston and Skokie combined. Do we know what part of it is Skokie, what Skokie's doing about it? Can we work together with Skokie? Also, do we know why there is such a great demand? There's a problem with supply, of course, but why is there such a great demand? I'm just interested in knowing something about that. The second subject I want to talk about is the Albion development on Sherman Park. I was surprised that the Plan Commission approved this development. They are asking for five variances, some of our major variances from our zoning, the building height, parking. And if you look at co-urbanize, you're going to see some very thoughtful comments from an architect and a former member of the Plan Commission, as well as negative comments about this proposal. And I hope it's not approved in its present form.
Okay, thank you, Irv. Next, we've got Chris Kruger.
Christopher Kruger, 2022 Dodge Avenue. I'm an activist. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not, I'm affiliated with various organizations. Evanston doesn't need more luxury apartment developments. We're focused, and when I say "we," there's a great constituency against the development, and it's growing, and we intend to grow it. And we're focused, we're laser-focused on the effects of people in median and low, median and lower income. We're not into pandering the professional class. I think the other half has done pretty well over the last 40 years in Evanston. I support affordable housing, and I don't support Band-Aids. I want a transformative plan. I don't want to hear about the market, because, you know, the market is a killer, because people are forced out of Evanston by the market, and they go, they go to West Side, South Side of Chicago. They get killed, they get robbed. They can get out of there, they can come up here, they can do better. We have seniors, women, people of color, lower-income people. I am for saving a remnant. I don't want a museum, I don't want a Henry Ford Village of people living on the West Side of Evanston. I want a growing, thriving, private business sector, and I want to grow the middle class and results, consequences for people below median incomes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we've got, thank you, Chris. We've got Kira Kelly, then Claire Kelly, then Tricia Conley. Okay.
I'm here also to speak about the Plan Commission meeting recently that reviewed the Albion residential proposal, which is 16-story high-rise, 286 micro-units with 80% studios. Since we're talking about affordable housing, these are 450 square feet, one bedrooms at 500 square feet, and even some three-bedrooms, which cost $4,300. But anyway, plan developments do not go through the zoning board, from what I understand, like everyone else's developments. They are so big, they're supposed to get a very rigorous vetting through the Plan Commission that evaluates the zoning variances, and in the context of the master plans and other very specific aspects of the standards of the plan development. Unfortunately, the zoning and the zoning variances were not discussed or deliberated at this meeting at all, not for one minute. There was two and a half, two to two and a half hours of commentary from citizens and experts, including many experts, a letter from the former Evanston zoning board chairman, architects, engineers, realtors, lawyers, some who shared serious concerns and very specific aspects of the zoning violations. Evanston's former zoning chairman says it is double the structure, double the mass, and the variances undermine the intent of the zoning, a total obliteration of our zoning. Architects spoke about the deficiencies, and others refuted the developer's data. When the developer spoke, he shared some major changes they made to the building, including the building being lowered by 16 feet. Yet, the commission's own architect there, nor seemingly anyone else, had seen new drawings. I had to be the one to ask the question, how will you do this? How will you lower the building? Are you losing a story? Turned out, there was a convoluted explanation about losing two inches per floor. It was all not very clear. Later, the architect asked for a continuance because there was so much additional information that he would like to review, and it was waived off. They were just taking their word for it.
I need to wrap up in 10 seconds.
Okay. So basically, we believe that because of the five major zoning variances, we, and almost like a very whimsical discussion about this building, like, I think it would probably fit there, and not a step-by-step evaluation of the zoning variances, that we need a much more thorough evaluation, also with experts of the city, who are specifically have this expertise, and that was absolutely not sufficiently vetted. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Kelly, and then Tricia Conley, and then Tracy McKeithen.
I'm Claire Kelly of 823 Colfax, a 45-year-old, I've lived here for over 45 years. So affordable housing, this is an extremely serious issue in Evanston, as well as the issue of segregated neighborhoods and wards. Last week, the Plan Commission, I think, made a mockery of Evanston's efforts to address the issue of affordable housing and fair housing, as it summarily disregarded and dismissed resident concerns, city plans, city zoning, most importantly dismissing our affordable housing ordinance, so they could rush through the enormous luxury Albion development recommendation. They readily allowed Albion a variance on our affordable housing ordinance, permitting Albion to reduce by about half the required amount of affordable housing mandated by our Evanston ordinance. And mind you, this is without paying into, the other half paying into our, the equivalent into the Evanston Affordable Housing Fund. You know, we all should know that the ultimate owner of Albion is Texas-based Salmon's Enterprises. This is the 83rd-largest private company in the United States with over $85 billion in assets. Yet, you know, they just couldn't, didn't quite want to do the, go the full way with our zoning ordinance. So we said, okay, your profits won't be high enough? Sure, go ahead. Yeah, we'll take off half for you. This is disgusting. While using the name of our low-income residence, Evanston residents, to cut these unsavory deals for the very rich, our Plan Commission readily approved just about every variance, variance upon variance, to accommodate this incredibly wealthy developer. As Evanstonians, we should be appalled and mortified by the actions of this appointed Plan Commission. Their failure to understand, to even understand, the plans and our ordinances and federal laws, and to uphold our city plans and ordinances, particularly the Affordable Housing ordinance. And seriously, you know, really, I think at this point, we should consider ask calling for their dismissal.
I need you to wrap up in 10 seconds.
Okay, for the members of this commission. It's time we truly deliver on affordable housing and stop pandering to the rich using the name of our low-income residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Tricia Conley, then Tracy McKeithen, then Meg Welch.
Thank you. My name is Tricia Conley. I live at 908 Greenwood, and I'm within 1,000 feet of the proposed Albion project. The city of Evanston has been focusing and prioritizing building extremely expensive luxury rentals. Meanwhile, we've recognized affordability as one of the city's biggest challenges. To my count, this is the city's 11th luxury rental development, nine being high-rises. Another micro-luxury high-rise as big as the Albion is still to be built at 831 Emerson. Plus, there are two to three mid-rise luxury buildings. Rents at the places that Albion compares itself to are extremely expensive, as much as $1,900 for a micro-studio, between 333 square feet to 450 square feet, all the way to $4,300 for a three-bedroom. Jim Schwartz of Oak Park, who's fighting against their Albion in Oak Park, articulated the argument so well, we're going to borrow it, with his permission. Incidentally, please note that Oak Park's Plan Commission voted down their building. There are many citizen concerns about the proposed new Albion development. I agree with all those concerns, but want to focus on a particular concern that stands out beyond any of those, and that's the impact of excessive high-rise development that has on our residents. And here in Evanston, we have to ask ourselves, who gets to live in these units? In analyzing the prospective effects of the Albion building on affordability, we can look at numbers associated with the average rent of buildings that Albion compares itself to. And we don't yet know the real rental cost for the Albion, even though we should be comparing Albion to the newest and most expensive buildings like Centrum Evanston, E2, and such.
If you can wrap it up in 10 seconds.
Oh, already. Thank you.
Time goes quick, yeah.
All right. Well, what I will wrap up is that, you know, we have to consider in the U.S., income correlates with race, and the median income of whites in Chicago, for example, is about $70,000, compared with $56,000 for Asians, and $41,000 for Latinos, and down to $30,000 for blacks, according to a Chicago Tribune article from January 2017. If this development and these other luxury high-rises are out of reach for most white people, they're unimaginable for other people. If we want to talk that we're inclusive, let's act that we're inclusive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Trish. Thank you, thank you, Trish. All right, Tracy, then Meg Welch, and then Adrian Willoughby.
Good evening. My name is Tracy McKeithen. I live in the eighth ward at 411 Dodge. I am the Executive Director of Family Promise Chicago North Shore. It is a family homeless shelter operating in Evanston. I am also a part of the Interfaith Action of Evanston Advocacy Team, as well as joining forces. So I thank you for making affordable housing part of the topic for this evening. So, we've heard other constituents talk about affordable housing for seniors and for other individuals that need a unit larger than a studio. So I want to tell you a story about one of the families in my shelter program that we housed this year. This family, two parents and one child, the child was enrolled in school at Dewey. When it was time for them to finish the program and move into their own housing, they could not find an affordable unit in Evanston. So, in April, the family was able to find an apartment in Wheeling. They do not have public transportation, the dad works in Chicago. This family moved into the apartment in Wheeling, and because of the McKinney-Vento Act, the school districts had to transport that daughter to Evanston to finish the school year, so she could graduate from fifth grade with her friends. They had to pay that nearly $2,500, so she could finish the school year, instead of being able to find her a unit for her family in Evanston, so that they could stay here where they had been living, in the shelter. The friends that they made, the relationships that they made, and with other resources that they had in Evanston. So I urge you to not have another discussion about the need for affordable housing in Evanston. It is crystal clear. We need to take action now, create a plan now, other than the mayor's task force of 2012 and that report, that is just a report. We need to take action now and make units available to families in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Meg Welch, then Adrian Willoughby, and then Gail Schechter.
Hello. I live in the fourth ward in Evanston, and I would like to express my concerns about the affordable housing plan that I read, that's been released, and I understand it's going to be presented today. And it's also tied in with my opposition to the Sherman Development. When the plan is presented, maybe on the PowerPoint, I'd like everyone to look at number two of the seven-point plan is increase affordable units in market-rate developments. And then, Slide 14 reports that the median fair market rate two-bedroom in Cook County is $1,232. This is mysterious to me, because HUD's report says it's actually $1,176. But furthermore, the unit of measurement then, when the slide switches to Evanston, is not market-rate rent, but what's the average rent that this slide reports? And the average rent that it reports for a two-bedroom in Evanston is, are you ready for this? And I don't believe that. And I'd like to know what the source for that is? Did that come from a web site? And it goes on to say, contrast average Cook County income is like $49,000, then it says, well, Evanston's is like double to that. There's no argument made, but it sort of the implication is, well, we can afford more in Evanston. $2,454 is not a rent that is in, within the reach of most people in Evanston, but it just coincidentally coincides with a two-bedroom rent in the luxury micro-developments. Stop the luxury micro-developments, please give us moderately-income housing for seniors and for families.
Thank you. Adrian Willoughby, then Gail Schechter, then Renee Padden.
Thank you guys for dedicating a night to this important topic. My name's Adrian Willoughby. I live in the fifth ward, and I'm the Executive Director for Reba Place Development Corp. And we focus solely on affordable housing in Evanston. And, you know, I want to kind of echo what some people said earlier about, let's not necessarily go make another plan, but I propose that we start with a pilot program. And my proposal is that our downtown area is supposed to be like a metropolis. I think when we think back to when the movie theater was first put in, it really seemed out of place with all the glass and steel. And it's filled in really nicely, and it looks like, it's a beautiful street to look at. And I think our downtown area will continue to do that, but I'd like to see as part of this proposed pilot, that we make it mandatory, that the units are included for affordability. And then, you know, in other areas of the city, then we can, we can sort it out, because as we're seeing with the Housing Opportunities Project, there's a lot of neighborhood concern about how it feels in the neighborhood. So it makes sense to have bigger structures towards our downtown area, so let's mandate that those units are included there, and then let's work with our neighbors to build in affordability throughout the different wards. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, Gail Schechter, then Renee Padden, and then Tina Padden.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is Gail Schechter. I am wearing my hat this evening as the member of the State Housing Appeals Board. That's the board that is charged with enforcing the state's Affordable Housing Planning and Appeal Act, which actually Evanston state legislator's champion back about 15 years ago. So I am the affordable housing advocate, so you might say I'm the official affordable housing advocate of the state of Illinois. And prior, you know, and you probably know me as having served as the Executive Director of Open Communities for over 22 years until last year, so I know a lot about the North Shore housing market. So I would just like to suggest that actually, rather than even using the term affordable housing, what we're really talking about is an Evanston that is, that serves a mix of income. So we're really talking about mixed-income housing, serving the full spectrum of incomes in the area. And what's happened, what we have right now is really four Evanston housing markets where there really should be one. The four are families, regular families, individuals. We have students from Northwestern. We have, since the 1990s, an increasing number of, quote, "empty nesters" and young professionals, and that's largely what's being catered by the downtown development, or who's being catered. And then finally, persons experiencing homelessness. And then when you overlay race and class, you've got further divisions in these populations where, again, there should be one. So I would suggest that you can, you have five considerations, ask yourself when judging any proposal or potential policy. Number one is, will this proposed project or policy give us housing for all populations in every neighborhood, in every building, or does it serve to separate or continue the separation? Number two is, is does it, does the housing ameliorate the region's stress? Because the Affordable Housing Act, we're part of a whole region with the jobs-housing mismatch, stresses between, you know, we just heard about families going from Wheeling to Evanston. Does it relieve the stress or exacerbate?
I need you to wrap it up in like 10 seconds, Gail.
Sure. The third is, does it displace people, or does it promote stability? Fourth is, are we rendering affordable housing a resource for generations to come, or does this, is this going to sunset in 15 years? And finally, is the housing going to be affirmatively marketed, or is it just going to be marketed to a few demographics? And I think if these five considerations are things that, that should assist you as you're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. All right, next up, we have Renee Padden, and Tina Padden, and Lonnie Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Council, and City Clerk. My name is Renee Padden. I live at 1122 Emerson, and I'm going to go a little off-topic today. I'm going to talk about the Emerson Ridge-Green Bay Road project. Almost three years ago, I stood here and called the project an abomination and juvenile, and I was right. The intersection has gone from an F to an F-, if that's possible. Millions of dollars have been blown for a downgraded intersection. From what I understand, the contractors who I said three years ago had not proven that they could improve the intersection, claimed that the, that then construction work on Sheridan Road is causing the problems today at the Emerson-Green Bay Ridge intersection. That is completely false. The traffic problems began when the contractors made the first changes. I know, I was there, I saw. Traffic is left in the middle of the intersection because the contractors screwed up the street configuration and the traffic lights. I hear people complaining all the time, from the very beginning. This traffic problem can be seen on a Sunday afternoon. Emergency vehicles are struggling to get through the intersection, with traffic finding it difficult to move. They did not do their own study, which I couldn't expect competent professionals to do. They used an old City of Evanston traffic study and did not take into consideration heavier traffic volumes for new developments in the surrounding area. They just put something out there with no proof that it would make the intersections better and no planning, when they spent time beautifying the sidewalks and causing problems for the businesses and residents.
You wrap it up in like 10 seconds, Renee.
There is still unfinished business at my house, and they left a messed-up sidewalk on the north side of Emerson between Green Bay and Asbury, where the sidewalk slants, making it more difficult for disabled persons and elderly to get out of the car. They never did their homework, they never proved they knew what they were doing, they made the intersection worse, and will blame everyone and everything but themselves. No excuses, I told you this would happen, now you have to fix it, and I'll hold them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. All right, Tina Padden, then Lonnie Wilson, then Bennett Johnson. And again, I ask everybody if we can please work hard to keep this to two minutes or less. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Council, and City Clerk. Here I am, Tina Padden, at 1122 Emerson, standing before you, again, talking about affordable housing. For many years, and now more than ever, Padden Properties has worked with various agencies, Connections for the Homeless, Family Promise, Catholic Charities, Trilogy, Center of Concern, and the HACC, to provide clean, decent, safe, and fair affordable housing for many families. As you can see from the chart, 15 of our 23 available units are occupied with families from the various agencies, which totals 53 people and 76% of our housing stock. Padden Properties is one of few landlords that accepts the program and has provided families, housing for families for up to nine people in one household. There are few three- and four-bedroom apartments available for families in need that have many children, but we have continuously provided homes for these families for many years. According to the chart for the presentation that you're about to hear, as someone spoke before, the fair market for a two-bedroom is $1,232 for Cook County, and the average rent for a two-bedroom in Evanston is $2,054. Currently, Padden Properties receives less than that from T-Bro for a four-bedroom, two-bedroom, four-bedroom, two-bathroom unit, when we're housing a family of six in that unit. With skyrocketing property taxes, water bills, garbage fees, rental registration fees, maintenance, utility bills, repairs, it is becoming impossible to maintain.
I need you to wrap it up in like 10 seconds.
We have watched the city give many developers bonuses, few affordable housing units, and purchase expensive homes, but only house a couple of families. We have asked help to maintain our units, such as new roofs or windows in our buildings, and we have never gotten any assistance. As of now, Padden Properties will no longer have any money in our budget to accept these programs that pay us well below the Evanston market-rate rents. We wish you well, and hope you can find new landlords that can afford to take the programs, but we can no longer take the programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Okay, Lonnie Wilson, then Bennett Johnson, then Barbara Sittler.
I'll move as fast as I can.
You take your time, Lonnie.
Hello, my name is Lonnie Wilson. Depending on who you ask, I'm either an activist or a troublemaker, so, depending on who you ask. And who I'm here trying to represent is the five generations of my people that this rich deal-making system was built on. As you make these deals, remember something. Three to 5,000 African-Americans left this town. I watched my grandfather get up and go to the post office to work, and when he got off for an eight-hour job, he went to another job as a construction foreman, so he could buy a house on Hobson Court. Now what I'm watching is that same house my daughter, who makes $90,000 working at the police department, can't afford. Something's wrong, people. And what we do in Evanston is this, I don't know, it's calcified normalcy of thought, we just chase our tails. And I use myself as an example. Almost 30 years ago, they commissioned a study in this place to study a bunch of kids in Bishop Freeman. You know who that kid was? Me. And today, we're still dealing with the same issues. I'm 61 years old, I've had a stroke, and we're still dealing with the same issues. Something's wrong, people. Quit chasing your tails. Now this affordable housing issue is what I stood here for. If you look at what other communities have done, if you look at Davis, California, and California, Cal State Davis, what they did is they raised $312 million and built a zero-energy community, and they put 315 people in it as homeowners of mixed income. Evanston doesn't want to do that, because I'll be honest with you, this is a rich person's town, and rich people make deals with other rich people. And that's why we don't get anywhere. You're not interested if I live here, but I'll be honest with you. That museum that you're talking about building, I'm going to be the Negro you look at, because I'm not leaving. So, my point is, is we've got to stop playing games. And there's a reason we play games, it's because the problem stays where it's at. We don't want to solve problems, we want to have advertisement how we talk about problems. That's what we do here in Evanston. And I know it, because I've been here, I've left this town for two weeks in my whole 61-year-old life. Two weeks I've left. I know this town like I know my butt.
Thank you, Lonnie. All right, next speaker is Bennett Johnson, then Barbara Sittler, then Michelle Hayes.
My name is Bennett Johnson, I live in 708 Washington, in the ninth ward. I'll be clear, we need to change the law to make mandatory affordable housing, instead of exercising the option. Because any developer who's interested in return on investment will opt for the money rather than affordable housing. And you know the reasons well as I have to do, race, you don't want those kind of people living next door to you. It's, we've been there. Now, I want to say a couple of things. I was part of a group some years ago, the mayor had a special group to look at, the need to do something about taxes in Evanston, because the revenue was not sufficient to handle the city business. And I also was aware of Henry George. Henry George was a very important guy back in, back in the day, who advocated not suburbs, but going up instead of out, in order not to have what we have now, what we call suburban sprawl. That was the answer for Evanston, because we can't go out, we have to go up. So since that's a reality that we have to deal with, we have to make sure that we go up diversely as we go out. Because as we know by what you've heard, what's going on now will make Evanston a middle-class, white, upper-middle-class, white suburban city. Now, you guys have the power. I'm just talking like Arnie said. But you have to make the decision, and make the decision right, because you, you don't have to be confused about this, it's very clear what needs to be done. I expect you to exercise your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bennett. Barbara Sittler, Michelle Hayes, then Darlene, I think it's Murray, could be McMurray. Barbara Sittler, Michelle Hayes, then Darlene, I think it's Murray, could be McMurray.
Good evening, my name's Barbara Sittler, I live at 825 Ridge Terrace and I'm a member for the last three years of the Affordable Housing Committee for age-friendly Evanston. Just a few things, I want to support the requests that you've heard already, that the Affordable Housing Fund requirements remove the option of paying money instead of creating units. We need the units, we need the affordable housing. It's been crystal clear, everybody here knows it, we've been building a tremendous amount of luxury units, enough already with the luxury. We need to retain the diversity and the access and equity to housing that has been a hallmark of this community for generations. We are losing the people who've created our community because we are pricing them out. They built the Evanston that we now enjoy, we need to make sure that they are allowed to remain and that future generations are allowed to remain. I also think and want to know from you what is being done with the money that's in that Affordable Housing Fund? We've lost 3,300 units of affordability over the last 10 years and as far as I know, we have not taken any of the money that's in that fund and created new affordable units. So I urge you, as others have said, to use your leadership, to use this as an opportunity to really reflect the values of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Michelle Hayes, then Darlene Murray, and the last speaker will be Betty Esther.
Hello, Council, Mayor, Clerk, City Clerk. My name's Michelle Hayes, I live at 712 Dobson in the 8th Ward. And I am privileged to have gotten out in front of a group of people on Facebook called Back on Their Feet Evanston, Illinois. One of the great privileges of that group is being able to hear directly from people who are impacted by a lack of housing or a lack of resources. And as we discuss this whole housing project, I want to make sure that all of you know what that face looks like. Today, I spoke to two people who we are helping get furniture for their move out of Evanston because they can no longer afford to live here. I have spoken to people who are sleeping in their cars at night because that is the only way that they can stay in Evanston. I know a certain percentage of our group, we recommend move out to Des Plaines because that is where the affordable housing is. And I want you to know who these people are. These people aren't, I don't know what assumption people have about people who are living close to poverty, but I think it's a wrong assumption. These people are by and large caregivers, they are either working in childcare or working as nurses or nurses aides or in senior giving, living. They are hard-working folks, many of them are parents, some are individuals. They are very good people and I am privileged to know them. And I think one of the things that we are doing very wrong in this city is we're not talking to them and finding out exactly what they need from them. I think it's really important that we keep these people here because I think they are the soul of Evanston and if we lose them, we are going to lose who we are. I also think that big developments and raising of tax dollars by things like parking tickets, et cetera, tend to get money from that group of people as opposed to the people who are wealthy in Evanston and can afford to do it. So I would caution you to make sure that the ways that we come up with affordable housing don't actually hurt the people that we're trying to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Darlene, and then Betty Esther will be the last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and City Council members. My name is Darlene Cannon, I come to you tonight to ask the City of Evanston to not continue to take the buyout from developers in which you allow them to pay a fee in lieu of affordable housing units. There are Evanston residents that are in dire need of apartments. I'm also asking that you scatter the affordable housing units throughout the city and not concentrate the units that you fund in the CDBG neighborhoods. Because when you stack poor people in buildings with other poor people, that is not integration, that is called segregation. The city should be funding projects that are scattered throughout the city as HUD laws require. And also, I want to make note that I, like my neighbor Ray, am against the 16-unit building and you guys should be considering that they're using the Regional Housing Initiative and you should be seeing how many of those units are going to go to Evanston residents before you decide next week to give them $550,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. And the last speaker for public comment is Betty Esther.
Okay, my name is Betty Esther. You want to give your name? That's okay. My friend here is standing with me and she knows and looked for affordable housing. We have heard lots of people speaking tonight, we heard from the state person that says she's the official Affordable Housing advocacy. What they all said, and what I encourage you to read, is the final rule that deals with the Fair Housing Act in the Federal Register, June, July the 15th, 2015. And it lays out what you should do. And it stays also in there that municipalities should be careful when they make their rules and zoning laws. Because when you make laws and things that deals with and come close to and is segregating people, then you are violating that precious thing that started way back in 1968 that so many people fought and died for. That we worked so hard to get, that we say, oh, we helping the low-income, the poor and everything. And that is not happening. I looked at that chart that you had and you had a number for your budget and you had Evanston Skokie. Fine, but where is the Evanston resident, which was their numbers and which was the other one? And then they had another number down there was the housing unit, which was 3,000 and something. Couldn't figure out how you got to that number. But the one thing that is not in that packet is where will these housing units be? If you are planning to put them in the 5th Ward, then you are violating the Fair Housing Act and we will be filing charges against you for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Betty. All right, and that, I don't have you on the sign-in sheet. So, look, the guys, folks, the deal is, I'm going to let you speak, but just so we all know for future, I mean, I've got to have the sign-in sheet, we're trying to keep with some time here and everything, so you've got two minutes.
I'm sorry, I was late.
If you could announce your name.
I'm Priscilla Giles, I live in the 5th Ward and I am late because I was being scolded for being late. So, but I, so I would have otherwise signed in. I just want to say that we need to have a moratorium on the high rises that are here. This is not the Evanston that most of the people who even live here, most of the people in this audience and some of you came here for. This is not the Evanston that you wanted to come to. And we have people who have been here for over 100 years who are not able to stay here any longer. It's not, it's not fair, although maybe this is the design. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. All right, and thank you, everybody, for, you know, taking the time to come here and speak so passionately and so articulately in public comment. I think I speak for everybody up here on how impressed we are with, again, how respectful you are and how passionate you are about important issues here in Evanston, so thank you. In terms of the order of the business tonight, we have two special orders of business, SP1, Affordable Housing and Economic Development Budget Issues, and it's for action. It is recommended the City Council receive presentations from staff on current plans as well as future challenges in the area of affordable housing and economic development and provide direction to staff for next steps. And that's for action, both of those topics. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll get right to it. Johanna Leonard, our Director of Community Development is here. Staff has an overview of where we're at with the programs we provide currently, what we see as our future challenges. Mrs. Leonard, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Clerk Reed, City Manager Bob Quitz, I'm Johanna Leonard, the City's Community Development Director. Before we launch into what we're going to talk about tonight, I just wanted to try to put a definition to affordable housing. When we talk about affordable housing, we're following HUD's general definition, which is housing for which the occupants are paying no more than 30% of his or her income for gross housing costs, including utilities. We know that quite often people are paying more than 30%. We know that gross income for a homeowner means something when you pay for your housing costs versus a renter, but we wanted to put that in focus there. And then as we prepared our presentation, we thought a lot about who can afford to live in Evanston and connected that to a lot of our major employers. And I just wanted to put some numbers to this. For somebody at District 65 who is a custodial or maintenance staff, they're earning roughly For the Chicago fair market value, for a household of three, that's at about 60% of AMI, which means they can afford about $1,100 per month for housing. The second number I want you to remember is for somebody who's a teacher, it steps five through, somewhere around five through 10, they're earning about $63,200 per year. And if they're a household of four, they're at about 80% of AMI and their monthly cost for housing at 30% of their income is $1,500. So what we're going to do is our group here of Sarah Flax, Ivana Clement, Ivana Thomas-Smith and Audrey Thompson and I are going to talk through what we're currently doing with the city, with our work in different departments to support housing people in Evanston. And then Sarah's going to go through some of the supply and demand issues in our community. And then we're going to, we're going to go through a few of our strategies that we've come up with and look forward to hearing your feedback on.
Good evening, Ivana Thomas-Smith, Director for Evanston Health and Human Services. I'm going to just give you some information to, in order to frame the context of our conversation. So in Article 25 of the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights states, "Everyone has the right to a standard of living adequate for the health and well-being of himself and his family, including food, clothing, housing and medical care and necessary social services and security of employment." An article published in July of 2017 in the Journal of Internal Medicine titled "Inequities in Life Expectancy Among U.S. Countries Between 1980 to 2014" found that where you live is a significant impact on your life expectancy with disparities as high as 20 years in difference across various countries. And we also know that uneven investment in racial discrimination, which are two powerful forces in American communities, are driven by some of our housing and community development policies and exacerbate health. And so that is why I'm here with this collective group of staff as a public health leader, understanding that housing is a public health concern. And so how do we do this? How do we serve currently? I'm sorry. So who do we serve currently? We are intentional about keeping in mind that our at-risk families and individuals in low to moderate income households are a concern of ours, including those people, persons with disabilities, older adults and those who are living well below living wage. And so we do this with the intention of understanding, we do it in a collaborative partnership and these are some of our partners that are instrumental in helping us carry out this great work. And so how we serve, we framed it in two different spheres, if you will. One is a funding source with many acronyms that I'm going to kind of explain shortly and then out of direct service funding. So when we look at our funding sources or all those wonderful acronyms that you saw, we have Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Programing, Emergency Solutions Grant, Affordable Housing Fund that many have mentioned tonight, and also recommendations that are made by our volunteer mental health board. But please understand that funding sources are determined by eligibility of programs and direct assistance that is needed. There is some flexibility, but we understand that there's greater flexibility with the Affordable Housing Fund and the Mental Health Board Funds. Now, our direct services that we provide as city staff, our general assistance, which as you know is in our entitlement benefit program, some emergency assistance to be a stopgap to prevent homelessness and to create housing stability. And that is a one-time emergency assistance pot of money that is administered to some of our families. We have resident assistance through case management, assuring that there's a referral mechanism to make sure that people don't fall between the cracks. And housing rehab, which is a 0% interest loan that residents can benefit from. And so now Sarah Flax is going to kind of walk us through our regional housing supply and demand.
Thank you, Ivana. Good evening, I'm Sarah Flax, Housing and Grants Administrator. Thank you, Mayor Hagerty, members of the City Council and City Clerk and City Manager for having us here to talk to you today about affordable housing. Okay, now the nits and grits of the housing market. Evanston is obviously a part of the larger Chicago metropolitan housing market and is a part of that regional supply and demand. The 2017 State of Rental Housing in Cook County, which is a report developed by the Institute for Housing Studies at DePaul University, sums up the gap. Quote, "Continued annual increases in demand for affordable housing post-recession has led to a persistent and growing affordability gap, or the difference between the demand for affordable rental housing by lower-income households and the supply of units that would be affordable at 30% of their income." Cook County's rental rate has hit a new peak since 2007 and has steadily increased as a result of declining demand for homeownership and a shifting preference for rental. In 2015, 44.2% of Cook County households were renters, the highest rental since 2000. In the Evanston-Skokie submarket, which was referenced earlier today, the supply of affordable housing units is almost 6,000 units short for the 9,927, excuse me, households that need them. So over 60% of that demand is not met by our housing supply. Because Evanston is such a desirable place to live, rents continue to increase because of demand at all income levels, making it even harder for lower-income workers and families to afford to live here. And developers right now are responding to the needs of upper-income households with high-end rental projects. All that's been discussed. Another aspect of the greater Chicago metropolitan housing market is our pattern of segregation. The Chicago metropolitan area has one of the most segregated housing markets in the United States of the 100 largest markets. And a recent study by the Metropolitan Planning Council and Urban Institute titled "The Cost of Segregation: What We Pay in Lost Income, Lives and Potential," highlights its impact. Like many U.S. metropolitan regions, historical and ongoing systemic racism has blurred the lines between racial and economic segregation. And today, our low-income residents are disproportionately people of color living in areas of concentrated poverty, the disadvantages of which have been well documented. But this study shows that segregation hampers the economy and quality of life for everyone living in the Chicago metropolitan area, not just the low-income residents. If the levels of economic segregation and African-American and white segregation in metro Chicago were reduced to the national median, incomes for African-Americans would rise by an average of $2,982 per person per year and provide an additional $4.4 billion in additional income and raise the region's gross domestic product by approximately $8 billion. So we're not talking small amounts of money or small amounts of opportunity. Locally, by creating more affordable housing in Evanston, we give lower-income residents access to community amenities that contribute to a high quality of life, living wage jobs, strong schools, safe streets and reasonable commutes. And we make Evanston the most livable city for everyone. Let's take another look at the Evanston housing market within the region. The Regional Housing Solutions is a new database that uses the same data from the American Community Survey that was just used in the prior map to map the seven-county Chicago metropolitan region into eight submarkets. Not surprisingly, Evanston has a unique combination of four of these sub- Not surprisingly, Evanston has a unique combination of four of these submarkets. I'm not going to go into the details of those submarkets right now, but you can explore it online at regionalhousingsolutions.org. However, although 60% of our community is low-density, which is that kind of pinkish color on the north and west, higher-income suburban, like many of our neighboring suburbs, the remaining 40% has decidedly urban characteristics. The different characteristics of our housing submarkets require that we use different strategies to integrate affordable housing throughout Evanston and create greater equity for all our residents. Let's take a look at some of those characteristics in more depth. This shows owner-occupied versus rental-occupied housing in Evanston by census tract, which is how these data are collected. Again, this is using the 2011 through 2015 American Community Survey data. Overall, Evanston has a very healthy balance of, between ownership and rental housing, with about 55% of total units owner-occupied and 45% rented. That's important because people need to be able to choose whether to rent or purchase, and nationwide, homeownership has declined as more people choose to rent, even if they have the financial capacity to buy, whether it's for career opportunities or because they just aren't ready to put down roots. But lower-income people have fewer options of where they can live because they often don't have the ability to purchase. And rental and ownership housing isn't evenly distributed throughout Evanston, as you can see from this map. The size of each circle shows the proportionate number of housing units in the census tract. The blue section is ownership, and the yellow is rental. You can see that in general, rental housing is much less available in north and in west Let's look at some of the details of the rental market more specifically. By census tract, again, the size of the pie chart shows the amount rental, and the different colors show what proportion of rental units are rented at affordable rates at different income levels. Red is available to households at 30% of area median. Orange is up to 50. Yellow goes up to 60%. Green is up to 80%, and blue is everything above 80% of area median. Most of the areas with high homeownership have little or no rental affordable to households at 30% of the area median, and not a whole lot of rental, obviously, available altogether. The combination of economics and zoning, including the high cost of land in a built-up, desirable community like Evanston, make it challenging to create economically-integrated neighborhoods, particularly in our lowest-density areas. The two census tracts with the most affordable housing, that are most affordable to households at 30% of area median, include our four senior buildings, Pearlman, Walcher, Prim Towers, and Jacob Blake, as well as Emerson Square and Oak Tree Village, and the Hill Arboretum Apartments. That's the concentration that we were talking about in those census tracts. Let's take a look at where our rent-restricted units, our affordable units that we know about, actually are. Again, by census tract, this map shows 983 income-restricted housing units that range for households between 30% of area median and up to 120% by census tract. It was compiled by staff and includes projects with City Home, Neighborhood Stabilization Program 2, and Affordable Housing Funding, as well as units with other funding, including low-income housing tax credits and HUD funding for senior and disabled buildings. It includes the Housing Authority of Cook County's senior high-rises and scattered-site family housing, and the McGaw YMCA's men's residence. It also includes most of our special-needs housing, including permanent supportive housing for people with chronic mental illness, developmental disabilities, autism, and residential care homes, even those for children. We know that we are missing some units, but this is most of them. Those 983 units address the needs of a fraction of the 12,915 rental households in Evanston with incomes at or below 100% of the area median. HUD's Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy data from the 2010 through 2014 American Community Survey shows that we have 3,255 households with incomes at or below 30% of area median income that pay more than 30% of their gross rent income for rent, and 4,695 more households between 30 and 80% of AMI that have that same problem. They're paying more than 30% of their gross income for rent. That's almost 8,000 Evanston families that are housing-cost burdened, who are unstably housed and challenged to pay for other necessities, including food, education, medical needs, and transportation. Again, we see that the census tracts with the lowest number of rent-restricted units are areas with primarily single-family owner-occupied homes in north and west Evanston. Some areas with the lowest number of affordable rental units, particularly for households at 30% and 50% of the area median, are actually in west-central Evanston. Now Savannah Clement, our Housing Policy and Planning Analyst, is going to give you additional details about our housing market and our families.
Thank you, Sarah. Hello, Mayor Hagerty, Members of City Council, Clerk Reed, and City Manager Bob Kowitz. I'm here just to speak a little bit on some of the issues that compound the affordability gap. And the National Low-Income Housing Coalition did a study that came out this summer called "Out of Reach," and they looked at Cook County, and what they did is they found that the fair market rent for Cook County for a two-bedroom apartment is around $1,232. They then did the math, and for people that are earning minimum wage, they figured out the hours a week that you would have to work to be able to afford that apartment, and the hours are 115 hours. And now, this isn't one person, it could be a household that has to work that, but it's still a substantial amount of hours, especially when you look and see that the total number of hours in a week is 168 hours. We also wanted to compare this to Evanston, and so we were trying to find some information that was most up-to-date with what the average market is in Evanston. The American Community Survey, while it's great, is a couple of years old, and so we were trying to find something that's more recent, that shows there's been a lot of new development in Evanston that has skewed the rents higher, and so we wanted to portray that. It's not perfect, but what we found is that the average rent for a two-bedroom apartment is around $2,400. And so at minimum wage, you would have to work about 229 hours a week to be able to afford that, and there literally aren't enough hours in a week. And you can see the salaries that would be needed as well, which is $49,000 for Cook County and $98,000 for Evanston. We also wanted, we did get your feedback that that $2,400 number is high, and so we did want to include the small-area fair market rents, which are by ZIP code, the federal government determines the fair market rents and the small-area rents. And because we are a higher-cost housing market, we are able to use the small-area rents. And so there they are, the 1230 and the 1430. But I will say, we use those rents with our TIBRA program and some other housing programs, and we do hear that it is still a challenge to find apartments at those rent levels in Evanston, and so we wanted to give the full picture of the affordability levels. So moving on, this just kind of shows that this isn't just an Evanston and Cook County issue, this is a nationwide issue of the affordability gap. This is a study from the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities, and it shows that since the recession, the median gross rent has continued to rise. I think in every state except for North Dakota, this has been the case. And when you adjust incomes for inflation, we have actually seen a decline in incomes by 7%. And so what this just speaks to is just the affordability gap widening, as I said, which then also leads to income inequality widening as well. And so now I'm going to pass this on to my colleague, Audrey Thompson, to speak to the housing survey.
Thank you. I'm Audrey Thompson, and I'm the Long-Term Care Ombudsman for the City of Evanston. So I don't have to tell you that, from what you've heard tonight, that older adults who live in Evanston actually want to remain in Evanston. And this was a consistent theme throughout all of the surveys that the Age Friendly Task Force completed early on. And so a part of that initial survey was that 43% reported housing to be the most critical element to measure age-friendliness. And so when we look at the actual housing survey results, we look at many different elements. And so really, the goal was to identify current and future housing needs for residents as they age. So a part of those highlights were really that housing in Evanston is just way too expensive, and that young people can't even afford to purchase a home in Evanston, and that there are limited options for affordable housing. Also, there are also factors that contribute to individuals moving out of Evanston, and we found from this results, the results of our community survey for the task force, was really that 30% of the survey respondents said that they worry about being able to stay in their homes in Evanston, really due to the cost that we've discussed here tonight. So I want to really talk about also some older adult challenges, and one is really fixed income. So, you know, recently, I worked with an 81-year-old who was displaced due to a reverse mortgage that really went wrong. She was 81, raising a great-grandchild. And even though we found a subsidy that would keep her in Evanston, we found that we had other, really, major issues. So first, we have a problem with property taxes, and many people say, and we've determined that the property tax is really a challenge for individuals who have fixed incomes, and I mean low-fixed incomes. And then the maintenance and repairs are really a challenge for individuals whose health may be deteriorating, they may need a ramp, or some modifications to the kitchen and bathroom, and all of that poses a problem for an individual with a fixed income. But for this 81-year-old, even though we found a subsidy that would help her to stay in Evanston, we found that there were landlords who would not accept her based on a couple of reasons. And the criteria was really low credit score. Remember, she was a reverse mortgage gone bad. So she had a low credit score, again, the fixed income, and then most landlords wanted an individual who made three times the amount of the rent, which she could not afford. So because of that, we have all of these landlord-tenant criteria that really push them out of Evanston. And then we have this issue with supportive housing. I find a lot of times that I have older adults who stay longer in independent living because they're afraid of the alternative. So there is no supportive living community in Evanston, which again allows, well, forces individuals outside of Evanston. So that means if they cannot stay independent, and they need some assistance with the activities of daily living, then they have to move to a nursing home because there's no gap like supportive living. So we find that those are also challenges for older adults. So now I will turn it over to Johanna, who will bring us to Action Plan, the Action Plan, which I know that all of you all would like to hear.
So from all of this, and some of the conversations we've had with staff, with members of the community, with members of this council, we came up with a seven-point plan. We weren't searching for seven, it just came out as seven. Actually, it came out as six, and then we included Audrey in the conversation, and it became seven. So we're going to walk through each of those, but I wanted to emphasize that there are sort of three components to this. The first is that we're creating new units that don't currently exist today. The second piece of this is we're working to convert or identify units that exist in our housing stock but may not be accessible or affordable to people that live in this community or want to live in this community, and we want to welcome here. And then the third component of these are programs that support and create safe and healthy housing for this community. And finally, one thing to note, and sort of keeping my economic development hat on, is that our housing market is very dynamic, and so we have to work to be nimble and mindful that this is constantly a shifting arena, that we have to think about these different action steps and other things going forward that we'll always have to keep coming back to this. So the first item here is to look at revising aspects of the city code to allow some changes in our built environment. The first is the rental of accessory dwelling units to non-family members at affordable rents. Right now, if you have a coach house, you may not be able to rent it to somebody who's not a family member, but let's incentivize that by changing the code and potentially putting those rents at affordable levels so people can earn that extra income for their home, for their household. The second is the creation of new dwelling units on existing city lots that are built with universal designs, so they're accessible to people with disabilities that may have alley access. These are some of our larger lots that could utilize an additional dwelling unit on it. And the third is creating more flexibility in home sharing. We have current rules within city code that prohibit more than three unrelated individuals residing together, and looking at how we work to create more opportunities for home sharing, particularly for some of the larger homes that certainly could house additional people.
Johanna, sorry. Alderman Fisk had a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we, you go back to the previous slide. I thought if there were coach houses, that they could be rented out to non-family members.
It depends on the definition of family for that particular spot.
Like, I mean, coach houses are permitted use.
But they're, some of them are grandfathered in. So this would be new existing accessory dwelling units.
When you look at the Kendall College development, all of those garages, with the exception of one, so far 17 houses have been built with coach houses with dwelling units in them, and my understanding was that that was built according to code and that they are rented out to non-family members. So I'm assuming all of that was done properly.
I'm going to assume so as well, but I will double-check and find out more information about that.
Okay.
Go on.
Okay. Then Sarah's going to take, and Audrey and Ivana are going to take the rest of these. Thank you.
Before you, Sarah, I'm sorry. Alderman Rusevman's had a question.
Can you give us any clarification on the accessory dwelling current ordinance as for new development? Because I thought that that was much of what we were working towards, for expanding that opportunity to build new, so I would like to know more about what Alderman Fisk is saying, that they've built them at the Kendall College property.
My understanding, and, you know, I'm not a zoning person, but what I understand is that the accessory dwelling units, the coach houses at Kendall, cannot be rented to non-family members, and there are a number of other places where there are accessory dwelling units, but people cannot rent them out to non-family members. And that, the older coach houses that have existed for many, many years and have been rented for many, many years, are the ones that continue to be allowed to be rented. Obviously, we have to double-check that, but that's what I've been led to understand on all that. So that's the premise of the need to allow rental for accessory dwelling units to non-family members, and also to restrict it to people who need those lower-income, you know, those affordable units, to integrate people who can't currently get into our single-family, largely single-family area neighborhoods. Okay?
I promise you, Sarah, we're going to let you get on. Alderman Fisk has one point, and then we'll move on to the presentation.
I'm sorry, Sarah. First of all, if there's a staff person who can point me to the zoning code where it says, refers to that, that would be helpful. So are you suggesting that if someone builds a new garage with a dwelling unit above, that that dwelling unit would be restricted to affordable housing rent levels?
And to people who need that affordable housing, because quite frankly, if there aren't those restrictions put on it, what will happen is people will simply rent to whoever, you know, we're not going to get people into areas that they can't currently get into, and if everyone comes off of the centralized waiting list that we're creating as a result of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, it gives people who do not have access to those areas access to those areas.
I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with the good intention of it, but that's a very difficult message to send to homeowners who may, first of all, want to use that unit as a home office, or want to rent it out to a family member. I think we just had a case of- I think we just had a case of a, I think Alderman-Winn, this was in your ward, of a accessory dwelling unit that was built for a mother and father of a family who, you know, who now live next door. And that was wonderful, but I think if you tell property owners that they can only use or only rent a dwelling unit to a certain group of people, I think that's going to be really tough for them to accept.
Let me reframe that. If they are, if they want to rent to non-family members, we can't take away their right to rent accessory, I don't think we should anyway, to their own family members, that's not the intention. But if they are going to rent to non-family members, we want, and they're developing these rental units, and we allow that by zoning where it's not currently allowed, the idea is to make those areas accessible to people who currently just have no way of getting into those neighborhoods.
And then is your intention to put a covenant on a building permit, for example, or a restriction, a deed restriction, so that unit can never be rented out to a related person?
It can be done, it could be done by deed restrictions. There are examples in, for example, in LA County. LA County is allowing and actually even helping fund the development of accessory dwelling units in certain areas where people will house only people off their homeless list. So there are many models of this that can be looked at and evaluated. We're not necessarily recommending that. But yeah, we would look at putting restrictions on some of them.
All right. Let's go, I'd like to go ahead and have staff be able to finish the presentation, and then we can have a discussion up here.
Okay.
I'm going to ask if I could speak.
I'm going to let Alderman-Ranny speak, and then we're going to do that.
I'm really, really concerned about the staff's presentation here. It's one thing to be giving us ideas, it's another thing for staff to be arguing with a member of the council about a policy it appears that staff has almost set. One of the things that I asked two months ago was that this council be allowed uninterrupted opportunity to sit down and discuss among ourselves what we want to do about affordable housing. We've never had that chance. I really appreciate hearing all of the different concepts that staff is presenting, but I don't appreciate being told that we're going to develop a policy to have coach houses with, you know, this policy attached to it and that, because that can't happen. We have to make that decision. We, we're the only ones who can make that decision.
And Alderman-Ranny, members of the council, and I apologize if this is being misconstrued. I think we wanted to give you food for thought.
Well, food for thought is great, but that's not what this is.
And I think if people are asking questions, Sarah's just trying your best to answer those questions. But all of this is being offered as food for thought, and I think, given the hour, Ms. Leonard, maybe we can just list through what's here. We don't need to explain it. If the council would like to come back and hear more, we can, but it's all just meant to be food for thought.
But when are we going to have, when are we going to have the conversation that you agreed we needed, and all the members of the council agreed we needed, about what we perceive as affordable housing?
I think there's five or six slides left as soon as we're done.
No, we can't do it tonight, because we have so much other things to do. This is a staff presentation. We need to have that discussion among ourselves at some other meeting, and I'm asking, when are we going to do that?
And we could, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, do that. And I think our attention tonight was, we need to have some sort of introductory presentation, and so that's this. And if the council wishes to set another date, we've got a calendar of dates ahead of us. So perhaps, and Sarah, thank you for your thoughtful presentation. I think perhaps in the interest of time, we can just walk through each of the seven points without getting into a lot of the detail. And if the council wishes to hear additional information tonight, or at a future meeting, we can do that. Again, but Alderman-Ranny, members of the council, this is really just meant for food for thought. We took our assignment very seriously, looking, the council looking for different ideas, and we wanted to provide some.
Okay. So how about Sarah and I just kind of tag team this seven-point list? So we went over the revisions to the city code, and then we talked a little bit about ways, we're hearing a lot from feedback about the fee-in lieu versus the onsite. So Items Two and Three really sought to address some of those things. Item Three, also thinking about how, some feedback from the council on how we leverage the Affordable Housing Fund to work with our regional and state partners and federal partners on providing more housing. Looking at how we institutionalize programs like construction geometry to create paths to homeownership, and how do we preserve our existing affordable housing? We know that there's naturally occurring affordable housing. We always hear about, here's places where people have a unit that's quite affordable to them, how do we make sure that we preserve that? And then, and then looking at, for Six and Seven, some of the things that Yvonne and Audrey spoke about is looking at the barriers, particularly financial literacy, some of the things that make it harder to get into good housing, and how we make sure that we maintain that healthy and safe housing in Evanston. So we're happy to delve into any of those, if you want to talk any further about those right now.
Okay. Alderman-Wilson.
Okay. I have a bunch of things I want to say. And thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the public comments. This comes up, of course, in an interesting context, because it's coming up in the context of a number of developments that are being proposed in the community, and I think that reflects, first of all, the economy, I believe, is improving. I think it also reflects that Evanston is a very desirable place to be, and people want to be here. I want to be here. I love Evanston. One of the things that people are fond of saying about Evanston is that we take great pride in our diversity. That's not a tagline that I personally use. Could you flip back to Slide Nine for me real quick while I talk? Doing things the same way we've been doing hasn't worked. Okay? We look at Slide Number Nine, and something hasn't changed for a really long time. Train tracks are there, people in the same neighborhoods, and we really, we live in a segregated community. Our kids grow up in a segregated community. And I think it's really beyond time to start thinking differently. When I have conversations with people in the community about these projects, I hear expressions like, "those people," renters or transients. That's not what I want to hear. If you're going to approach me with a conversation that includes the expression "those people," you can move on to the next person, because that's not a conversation I want to have. The next building that goes up on an empty lot, that's not driving anybody out of Evanston. Back when we passed the Affordable Housing Ordinance two years ago, year ago, two years ago, I voted against the ordinance. And the reason I voted against it is because I believed, I believed, I believed that people were going to be angry that the buildings are too big, and that we were going to have people lined up protesting how big the building is. We made a conscious decision, as a council, to let people go bigger and better, and, you know, better is, I guess, arguable, but bigger and more dense, less parking, all of these things, in exchange for money or units. But I see somebody in the audience who once called me out, came to comment along those lines. You know, we can talk about social issues, but what really brings out people is how tall the building is. And I find that to be disappointing. What I want to see is, I want to see policies that are based on empowerment, not based on charity. I want to see concepts, Ms. Payden has been talking to us since we were doing these meetings in the parasol room. There are good ideas in there. We have a lot of landlords in the community who've worked hard to maintain housing at market-rate affordable rates, but they're not getting any help. I want to see policies that are designed to promote homeownership. When we have policies that, you know, kind of preclude people from getting the benefits of equity in their property, we're denying them the right and the opportunity to develop intergenerational wealth. Owning a piece of property and being able to get the equity from that over a period of time is one of the primary ways historically that people are able to develop wealth. If we're going to persist in having policies that lock people in to like a minuscule rate of return, that's promoting the segregation, that's promoting institutional racism. For all of you out there, what I want you to do is, one of the slides said, "Yes in my backyard." Everybody talks to us. You guys need to start talking to your neighbors, because they're the ones you need to convince. We could come in here on any given issue, and it's going to be like, maybe 40, 60. You guys need to go back and talk to your neighbors and get people to understand that it's okay in your backyard. Years and years ago, somebody wanted to do a, an assisted, a slight assisted living arrangement in a house near my house, and somebody was going around with a petition, sign this petition. It's very, very important. They want to put this house up across the way, and this is so terrible, it's so terrible. I didn't want to sign the petition. I didn't know how it would turn out, but people are afraid. They're afraid of what's going to happen. They're afraid of the big building, they're afraid of the people that are going to be in there. It's a building, okay? People, human beings, live in the defined space, whether it's a tiny home, whether it's a shack, whether it's a tent, or whether it's a park bench. We are all human beings, and that's what matters. Buildings aren't the most important thing. The people are the most important thing. So as we go through this stuff, you know, some people might not like, what do I do, how I feel about it. But what I refuse to do is, I am not going to affirmatively persist in perpetuating the institutional and systematic racism that leaves us with Slide Number Nine. So that's my broad overview, and, you know, we're not going to get all the details or any of the details tonight. I think Alderman-Ranny's right. We need a long time to talk about this stuff. But those are my goals for what I want to see, broad picture, and I hope we can kind of collectively work towards those goals. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Alderman-Wilson. Alderman-Fleming.
Thank you, Steph, and thank you, community, for your comments. So I have a couple of things, I do not have the cure for affordable housing, but I have some things that I would like us to work on. Well, one, I have a question before we do that. What happened with the units that Mayor Tisdale proposed, the tiny house configuration, somewhere, I remember we purchased some land, and does anyone know what I'm talking about? That was not that long ago. I think it was on Darrow, maybe?
Yeah, I think it was conceptual. I don't know that it really got beyond the conceptual state.
Okay. All right. All right. So Johanna, as you talked about this, when you gave the salary, which is very helpful, I think they were at 30%, or I don't, whatever they were. I think we need to look at our AMI, because those numbers you gave are people who, I mean, that's someone's salary, and I think it was like the custodian is paying 70% of his salary or something, or whatever it was. So I'd like us to look at what we're looking, I know you talked about the HUD numbers, which I don't think are really working. So I would like us to look at adjusting our AMI rates. Do you know what? I didn't write the number down, I'm sorry, but you gave a couple of numbers in the beginning.
So the number I gave is, so somebody, if we had a head of household and a single earner in a household earning $42,660, that's roughly what a custodial or maintenance staff earns, it's District 65. That, if you take that number and look at what HUD says is our, is this region 60, that would be 60% of AMI for a household of three.
Okay.
So, you know, just for the benefit of everybody, the number of people in a household and AMI address that. So it's not, so for somebody at 60% of AMI for a household of four, they would be, that household would be earning $47,400.
Okay. So I would, so my one thing is, whatever we can do, I don't know how close we have to stick with HUD if we're talking about using our own affordable housing funds, but I would like us to address that number, because, I mean, if you make $10 an hour, which we just, you know, patted ourselves on the back for people to make, they're making $20,000 a year, right? I did the math. So they're making $20,000 a year. So I don't know if that was coherent, but I would like us to address what we're looking at in terms of our income rates. And I say that remembering that just last week, when we looked at the General Assistance Fund, and we had the pools of money left over, when, as I'm learning about general assistance, the amount of money that you have to make to qualify is, you know, pennies. And so we're not really max, I don't feel like we're maximizing these two different things.
We can, we can look at that if we come back, we can provide more details on that.
Okay. And then the second part is, I do like Adrian's idea about the pilot. I don't, I don't have it fleshed out, but I know we talk a lot about it, you all present a lot about these transit-oriented developments, and that's the new big thing, and no parking and all that. But if that's where we see development interest in, I think we maybe need to look at requiring the units being built in there, assuming if you're making $20,000, you might not be able to afford rent and a car, so maybe you don't need those extra parking spaces. And we can look at diversifying our downtown, and those kind of areas, giving people like a foot into Evanston and near transportation. So I would consider that as maybe a pilot program for our transit-friendly. And my other question had to do with, sorry, I have a lot of notes here. So the issue that Audrey talked about, I had just in the last week, I think four seniors called me, who are essentially homeless, most taking care of grandchildren. And so I do think we need to do something, if we can use our affordable housing funds to either do some kind of voucher or subsidy system here in the city, working with people like Ms. Payden, or other landlords, or even smaller properties that we know are on our vacant housing list, that we can look at purchasing ourself. But then looking at that selection criteria, because the young, well, the older lady I spoke with, that was the issue she was having. She was working to take care of two grandchildren, also getting social security for both grand, or SSI for both grandchildren, but she didn't have a credit score high enough to get her into any buildings, and she was being put out because her landlord had sold the building into condos. So that's a, that's a huge issue, and she's obviously very nervous about leaving Evanston because she has two grandchildren with disabilities. But as the city, at this point, there was nothing I could do to help mediate that. If we had some city-owned or some landlords that we could work with, who we know are going to work around this issue for some people, we can keep them, you know, in our city a little bit longer. And then the last thing that I would like us to think about is that fee-in lieu. So I looked at a couple of different communities that have a higher fee-in lieu, and make it almost impossible for people to even opt out of that. So I do think we have to get serious about our fee-in lieu and raising that, and making some real restrictions on when people can opt out of that, not just because it's not going to do well for their bottom line, but because, you know, it's a fire hazard, whatever it is, but we have to really look at that. I do like the accessory dwellings. As much as I like people, I do think they might resist, particularly in some parts of town, having that restriction. But someone like me who has a huge backyard would happily put another place back there and let people live there. So I think we do need to look at that as a real way, and even maybe a subsidy, again, if you are going to build and rent to people who need affordable housing, that the city can help with some of those costs, whether it's, you know, taking some money off the permit fee, or whatever it is, so that people are inclined to do that, they see that as a city benefit. And I definitely agree with Dawn, that we talk a lot about the diversity, and so on and so on. And I think a lot of people, when they talk about even affordable housing, go right to an issue of race. But I know there are more than poor African-American people in this city, so I think we have to, you know, we have to think that affordable housing is good for everybody, not just to keep the diversity that we bus across town to our schools.
Thank you, Alderman-Fleming. Alderman-Ranny?
I just want to pose a question to, just throw it out there. I think there's a growing movement, I don't know if they're all the same people, but there's a growing movement demanding that the council not support the large, tall building developments that are coming before the various commissions and boards. And I'm, let's assume we understand how these projects are financed, and how the developers are bankrolled. And let's say we start, let's say the next, the four that we know of that are in the pipeline, let's say they're turned down, not because, having nothing to do with the affordable housing issues or anything, but let's say they're just turned down. They come to us from a planned commission, we turn them down. What happens if that happens? What happens if the sentiment is so strong that those developments, which I believe many members of the vocal public are really, really, really opposed to, and I think they have the ear, ears of many members... have the ear, ears of many members of this council? To me, it's frightening because one of the issues that we've had with our budget is the permits. But putting that aside, it diminishes the amount of units available in the City of Evanston over the, you know, next couple of years. And it reduces the inflow of money into our economy and taxes and, but mostly the number of units and the contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, whether it's by virtue of units or money. I mean, just think about how, how that would work. Who would we use? How, who would we attract to replace even a small percentage of that housing? And how, how would we, how would we incentivize, let's say, a not-for-profit developer to build the kind of housing that the public claims it wants, at least the vocal public?
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Rennie. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. I stand with Alderman Wilson in moving forward with policy of empowerment and not charity. Thank you for saying that. And I believe that we need to, before we leave today, have a date and a plan of when we're going to meet as a council and come up with an action plan in moving forward. So I hope we can do that. I'm hoping that we can also provide opportunities for financial literacy so that when we do develop a plan for the Affordable Housing Funds, that the residents are prepared to purchase. Homeownership, as was mentioned, is your first opportunity for wealth building and we are not supporting our residents in doing so. My generation, they're all leaving. Families cannot afford to live in Evanston. We've all heard the numbers about how many have moved out. They're moving out of Evanston because of lack of affordability. We need to be very intentional about scattering the affordable housing. Everyone has said it. I'm hoping that's something that we can do. The accessory dwelling has been discussed. And in terms of how we're supporting our landlords, I would love to know the number on how many of our affordable rental units are independent landlords that own owner-occupied multifamily flats and multiple units. Using Payton Properties as an example, she is providing subsidized housing for 53 Evanston residents and we can't figure out a way to help her maintain her properties. If we could use some of the funds that we have or others like Ms. Payden to help them maintain their units, that would be a great way to keep units. Right now, she's saying she can't afford to do it. We have grants for economic development. I feel like Ms. Payden and her properties is an example of a combination of economic development, a combination of affordable housing. We're granting agencies in town for her to go to the agency and get the funding when we all know that it's Ms. Payden and her family and her properties that we are subsidizing. I would like us to be able to figure out a way to give her direct support and not a loan. I understand that the rehabilitation loan is available to landlords, but that is a lien against their property. And if we can grant businesses and we can fund other subsidized properties, we should be able to support these type of landlords in town. In addition to that, we should be doing more to retain the affordable housing that we have by supporting our residents that are in distress. I've talked about before, we, we monitor a list on utility shut-offs and other distressed property tax sales and we, when we see that the residents are in risk of losing their home, we should do some outreach, not just monitor the list. Are you aware of this program? Do you know that there is a grant? Do you know that you qualify for a tax exemption? Getting the residents out to the resources that they need is something that we must do urgently. That's it for now. I just hope that we have this meeting soon as a council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ruth Simmons. Before I know, we have several other Aldermen that want to talk. City Manager Bob Kowitz, I want to make sure we have a thorough conversation about this. This is what everybody came up here for public comment to speak about was affordable housing. If we move the economic development, because I know you wanted a presentation on that and I also know we have to go into executive session tonight, are you comfortable that that's not going to somehow throw us off?
Absolutely not. We'll come back with the economic development presentation another evening.
Okay. So that's what we'll do. We'll keep this conversation going on, affordable housing. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to my colleagues for all your comments. They've been, for me, really, really helpful. As I said at my last ward meeting, when we've touched on some of these issues, it's really complicated. I mean, they're all woven into all of the rest of the issues that we talk about, whether it's economic development and the buildings and affordable housing and how we're going to do that and how we're going to make it equitable. It's really, really complicated. So I'm looking forward to that, to that discussion. Lots more to say, but I'll save it for that time.
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
Okay. I wanted to, I guess, get a couple more details as our staff is developing concepts here. When we're going to talk about the fee-in lieu, I guess, in the future, I don't think that it should necessarily be one-size-fits-all. So if you have somebody who tears down a building that had 20 affordable units in it and the new ones are all going to be not affordable and you're going to replace it with 10% affordable, the $10,000 fee is not going to recapture that. So I'd like some thought given to, and we use the expression, "Create an affordable unit." Well, what that really translates to is they're getting a discount on the rent. So it's, in effect, a rent subsidy. So that's really what that is. And that has a, if it's over 25 years, that's got a present cash value. So I would want, you know, the present cash value of that taken into account with the, with the fee-in lieu. So in other words, we wouldn't want to make a decision or put a developer in a situation where they can get off, you know, giving somebody, you know, an $80 a month subsidy because they're, you know, in a certain rent area and, you know, either get off too easy or get hammered too hard. So just give some thought on how those two, the fee-in lieu and the actual unit subsidy interplay. I would also like to have some consideration given to the tear-down fee and particularly to tie that to loss of units. So if somebody's going to take down, whether it's a, you know, a ranch home or whatever, or a multi-unit building, it gives some thought to how we can tie that tear-down fee to the loss of, of units. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Braithwaite?
I'll be brief. Again, thank you to residents, thank you to staff. A lot of the solutions that you brought up sum up a lot of the conversations I felt and I've heard, both from this council and also our previous council. So thank you very much for the time and effort that you put into it, as well for the map that shows all the units across the City of Evanston. I just, there's a large project, as you all know, that's coming up in the Second Ward and I think, Alderman Wilson, I think you, you said it best, the challenge is going to be for residents across the city to accept or not accept. And right now, I have a large number of residents that are not accepting the large project for a variety of reasons that are, that are laid out. So that puts us all in a very difficult position as we look for opportunities. So with that said, I am strongly in supportive, obviously, of expanding that fund to stabilize the families that are, that are leaving town because of the affordability. And I'm also in support of the inclusionary housing, but I think we can all agree that we're, that is not going to solve our, our issue. We just can't build units enough. And I really don't know too many families from the Second Ward or anywhere else in the City of Evanston that wants to leave their home to go to, to downsize to a smaller unit downtown Evanston, to be quite honest. So I do hope that before we leave tonight, that we're able to set another meeting date. That's important and I can go deeper into my comments. And then to the residents who did stay behind, there was just one thing that I wanted to use this as an opportunity to clean up. The meeting, the Second Ward meeting was canceled, not out of disrespect to the conversation, but if you look at our city calendar, there are a number of CBDG hearings this month. So I am more than willing to have any follow-up meeting to continue discussion where we can bring staff to, whether now leading up to the vote, and I can hopefully follow up with anyone that's still here after the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Ravel?
Just really quickly to echo the comments of my colleagues. And I know a lot of times when we talk about affordable housing, we talk about creating new affordable units, but we've also made it very clear tonight that we're also talking about preserving or not, not having any net loss in affordable units as we move forward with the various programs that I am hoping we're going to implement. And I just, since we're going to have time for staff to do a little more research, I would like, we, we know that we're not going to ever raise enough money through our Affordable Housing Fund to do all the things that we really need to do, but I'm wondering if there are some incentives that other communities are using to stimulate creation of affordable units, to basically encourage developers to provide the kind of developments that we're looking for, that provide affordable units. So these aren't things that are going to take money from our Affordable Housing Fund, but other, you know, tax incentives or some kinds of ways that we could look at that might encourage developers to come into town and really want to put affordable units in Evanston for us.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Ravel. Alderman Winn?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all of the comments by everyone this evening, both up here on the dais and out in the audience and our staff, especially many of the things that, that I find interesting in all of these proposals have already been supported. But I do think the, creating the new options are very important in terms of accessory dwelling units and looking for other, other ways in which we can add to the community. I do appreciate the fact that we do want to have the units everywhere and making them available in transit-oriented developments is addressing part of that issue is like people want, people who want to live in the downtown are not just the people who, who can, who are all the wealthy folks, that there, there are real advantages to being able to live in our downtown in terms of transportation costs and, and other savings. And then I think it would be interesting to, those are, some of those are smaller units, to figure out how we get our seniors into those units or make those more, let seniors know more about them because then that takes some of the issues of property maintenance and weather-related issues away, away from the seniors because those are very burdensome to seniors who are living alone. I like the idea of trying to come up with a supportive housing community. There's more and more folks who need just some supportive housing. They don't need to move into a nursing home. It's incredibly expensive. That's not the right place for them, but having some ability to have some kind of support during the day is really, really important. So there, there are so many things that we've all discussed. Alderman Ruth Simmons, there was something you said a couple of minutes ago. I didn't write it down, but I, I agree with it. So, so one of the things you said. But I, but also it was related to finding the landlords who are housing, who are providing affordable housing and figuring out ways in which we can, just as we, we have a method to retain existing businesses, that is retaining landlords who provide affordable housing. That might have been it, but, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Winn. Alderman Fleming?
I forgot one thing. So then I thought we're fortunate to have, and Adrian left, but Reba Place Development Corporation that has been doing affordable housing for a million years and they, I can't remember the details of it, but they do have a homeownership program where you can, I believe, kind of almost like a rent-to-own, don't quote me, but several people in the ward have gone on to either purchase a co-op or a condo or even a single-family home because they've been in this Reba programs. It would be a shame for us to not utilize a development corporation here already in Evanston with a proven track record, either to help us develop some more units, to help us look through the homeownership program and model theirs, or even to use some of our affordable housing funds to support them since they're already doing it. And I know it's been harder for them to get those units because, you know, they're paying market rate as well and they're buying buildings and such from developers and they have to compete for HUD funding or whatever else. So I would like to add that to our list as we talk about developers, that we want to look at developers who specialize in affordable housing, starting with the one we have here in Evanston, and really look at them as a partner in this so that we don't have to then, as a city, branch off and have a housing corporation as a city, but we can work with the housing corporation. And I know that Adrian, from speaking to him a couple of days ago, is looking actively at properties and is very conscious of not saturating, you know, my ward or any other ward with properties, but he is fighting against the developers who have cash and can buy these units, you know, much quicker than he can. So we don't want to miss that opportunity to work with someone who's already here.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Okay. Seeing no more lights, City Manager Bob Kowitz?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate all, all your feedback. I think we needed to get through at least some of the summary information. It would seem to make sense that we could take your questions, put together sort of a memorandum, white paper of sorts, with additional information to address all the questions that have come up, have that for you for a next meeting, no presentation, just allow you to dive in. Is that unstructured enough, too unstructured? How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay. So then I think it's just a question of when you would like to get back together. Is this something you're thinking of in the next month? Is this something you're thinking of in the next two months? There are some dates available. Obviously, I think, as you all know, we're getting into the budget season, so we have a number of dates already allocated for budget discussions. In speaking with Alderman Ravel earlier today, she was interested in perhaps moving up a discussion of another plan for the month of October. And I don't know, Alderman Ravel, if that, so that's out there and we had talked...
Right. So my thought was that we would piggyback on the, not, either before or after the Human Services Committee meeting on October 2nd to have a discussion about our vision for the downtown before we begin to deal with all the various development proposals that are going to be coming before us, starting on October 9th, actually.
So if that's something the council's interested or not interested in, if you're not interested in that, that could possibly be a date for a continued discussion on affordable housing. Again, the regular meeting on October 9th is a regular city council meeting. The 16th is our plan to present the budget for the first time. The 23rd is a regular city council meeting. And then there is a fifth Monday in the month of October, October 30th, which we had claimed for a council meeting to talk about these various plans. And so I think actually we could propose to talk about the downtown plan on October 30th, along with, I think, the West Side Plan and one other. So clearly, more than one plan tonight might be ambitious. So, at this point. So the 30th of October is available. The only day in the month of October that does not have a meeting that we could schedule on top of is Tuesday, October 24th. Otherwise, in looking at the calendar, there is a council-related committee meeting every other weeknight, Monday through Thursday, every night in the month of October. So some, some ideas for dates.
Alderman Fisk?
I spoke with Alderman Ravel about the possibility of the Human Services meeting on the 2nd and because I took a little bit of, of care to extend citizen comment at the last Human Services meeting, the, the meeting ran really long. And so I would, Alderman, I saw her facing back and forth in the hallway. So if we're going to do this, I would suggest before the Human Services meeting with the knowledge that we'll probably have a lot of citizen comment. So it's okay with me as Chair of Human Services if we want to do that before the Human Services meeting, but I'll leave that up to you guys.
Can I just clarify something? You said, were you saying you suspect we'd have a lot of citizen comment on the downtown development?
On the downtown thing, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that, Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, I agree with that, Alderman Fisk. I mean, I have this idea, just, I'll just share it with you. I mean, I have this idea that, you know, people care a lot in Evanston, and they want to get up here and they want to have their thoughts considered. I also wonder, and I don't know if the council's ever done this in the past, it would have to be done, I suppose, on the Rules Committee, if this council could ever have a meeting so they could really get into the conversation without citizen comment at that meeting. So in essence, taking the affordable housing conversation again the next time this council meets, you know, do we need another hour of citizen comment to hear a lot of, you know, comments, some of which would be the same? Or can this council, you know, not have public comment at that meeting and just go into deliberations and discussion? Alderman Wilson?
Oh, okay. I will go to Alderman Fisk, and then she was ready.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think we always want to have citizen comment, always.
I, all right. No, I agree with always having citizen comment, but I believe that we have done this in the past when we have continued a meeting, because we have, when we've, Alderman Rainey, perhaps you remember us doing this, when we've had several hours of citizen comment, this was before we limited the rule, and then in order to have the council have a discussion, we continued the meeting to another date, and then we started with the council discussion. Does this sound familiar, Ann? Or is this, was I too tired? Because I do, I agree-
The council is never able to have, the council is never able to have a full-blown conversation among itself at a reasonable hour.
Well, right. I mean, that's why I'm just having a discussion about this.
Which has nothing to do with not hearing citizen comment. The fact remains, we just never get to do it. Our meetings start way too late, and, you know, when we go, when we have an executive session, it's usually 10 o'clock at night and-
Well, another solution to this would be to have a meeting on a Saturday morning, as we used to have budget meetings.
This is a really good time to have a discussion, just a discussion.
And so then you have a four-hour meeting when we're wide awake, and citizen comment lasts 45 minutes.
Okay. Let's keep going. Thank you, Alderman Winn. Alderman Wilson?
Thanks. I think we generally all kind of agree that you can't really not have citizen comment, even if it were a continued meeting. I think that people would show up who didn't know that it was a continued meeting, they'd have that expectation. First of all, everybody who stayed, thanks. That's really awesome. I appreciate that. No, seriously, it's late. A lot of you spoke, and a lot of you stayed, and I really am grateful for that, because you do get the benefit of having heard what we talked about. But I think that when we keep talking about it, you know, all of you who are here still talked, hopefully you kind of got a sense of what we're thinking, and maybe not everybody needs to stand up next time, and we can just kind of dive right in. I think that's, you know, what we're all collectively looking forward to doing. I think we've got a lot of, you know, room to work with here and some good, you know, baseline ideas, and, you know, we just want to be, you know, in a situation where we have enough time to actually execute on those.
Thank you. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Can we have this meeting in the automatic library? Like, a real working meeting around the table?
Yes.
Yep. Yes, we can. All right. It'd still be a public meeting.
Yeah.
You'd just be cramped in the automatic library.
Still be-
The idea is sitting around a conference table is just a little more conducive, right, to having a conversation. It's so formal up here, you have to sort of turn your head to look at your colleagues, that that may be more just conducive.
But then it's not broadcast.
No, it would be.
Oh, it would be? Okay.
We figured it out.
Okay. All right. Alderman Fleming?
I'm going to propose some dates, because I'm tired. So Saturday, November the 4th, if we can do Saturday, I think I would like to have this affordable housing conversation before the year is over, is my proposal.
I move approval.
Saturdays are hard for me, really.
Oh, I was going with Saturday, because I thought that's what the head nods were doing for Saturday. What'd you say?
Their time?
I assumed we were, oh. No, Alderman Wilson says Saturdays are no good for him.
Is there a time? I asked him if he had a time. Members of the council, if you're willing to go that late, I would really encourage you to look at the fifth Monday on October 30th.
Well, I was going to say that, but then I thought that the head nods were saying Saturday was better, so I would move for either one.
I would prefer the 30th.
But isn't that the night that we already have a number of-
We do not have them needing October 30th.
I thought he said we had a number of presentations already scheduled for October 30th.
Well, I think that, I would say we push, move those back.
And Alderman Braithwaite, members of the council, if the council's agreeable to Alderman Ravel's suggestion of talking about the downtown plan on October 2nd, that was one of the plans. So we can, I think that was probably the main plan of that group that we had planned to talk about.
Is that October 2nd, the same evening as the Human Services?
Yes, so that we would do the meet, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just commented to Alderman Fisk that that's going to be the same evening that I think Human Services is going to hear the police report on Ian Beatty, so I'm going to assume that that night is going to be-
Busy.
Busy.
Right. No, I think that was why Alderman Fisk was suggesting we would do this discussion about the downtown for the hour prior to the Human Services meeting. Why don't we start at 5:00? Can everybody start the downtown discussion at 5:00?
5:30?
Sure.
I can try for 5:30.
We're talking Tuesday, Monday, October 2nd.
A Monday, October 2nd.
No, it would be, no, it's everybody, Ellen, if you want them to talk about-
And then what time would we start, Human Services, 7:00?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Affordable housing on the 30th.
And then we'll do affordable housing on Monday, the 30th.
And at 7:00, would you like to start earlier than 7:00?
Yes, please.
Yes.
6:00 in the automatic library. So we'll televise it live from the automatic library, so folks who can watch and hear or watch in the banter room. Okay. Very good. So just to review then, so every Monday in October has council meeting. There's the Equity Training on Wednesday, the 4th. There's a Saturday meeting on the 28th. So that's, those are the council meetings, and most all that, I think we've discussed all that previously. All right. So we will just have a white paper for you then, for the 30th of October, and it will be in the automatic library, and we'll be prepared to just answer questions, nothing else.
Alderman Fisk?
And I'm assuming that we can forward our questions to staff to be included in that paper?
Absolutely. So everything that's been covered this evening, anything else that you have, we'll just put together one memorandum, and we'll be available for questions that evening.
Can we have live questions?
I beg your pardon?
Can we have a live question?
It's conducive to watching the way that you're sort of, could you have live questions at the interview?
I think that's, I think that's somewhat of a challenge. I think we can see if there's a way, maybe to take cards or something, but I think ultimately that that's been, that's been difficult.
Put together some of those questions, and tell them what you think. People here are thinking about, but haven't brought forward, but it includes the audience that needs to start learning, thinking about affordable housing in different ways. You're talking about talking to our neighbors. This is a good way of communicating with the community.
And again, ma'am, I think what I'm taking from the council this evening is that the council wants opportunity to talk amongst itself, that it's-
Okay. So, let's, yeah, appreciate the comment, and, you know, we'll craft the meeting for that, for the October 30th. Okay. Seeing no more lights, can we do a quick call of the wards?
We have a reappointment.
What's that? I'm sorry. You're right. We, thank you, thank you, City Clerk Reed. Can we have, does anyone want to move the motion? We have an appointment, reappointment for the Board of Ethics, Jennifer Billingsley for action.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes nine to nothing. Call of the wards, we're starting today with Alderman Fleming.
Thank you. So there's a Ninth Ward meeting Saturday at 9:00, but I also just want to, because I am still getting lots of phone calls, which I appreciate, this weekend I watched the news with the citizen frustration in St. Louis over the non-conviction of the police officer in the killing of an individual, and I just want to say to my council members and to the city of Evanston that we are not St. Louisan, and I'm very thankful, but we, there are a lot of citizens in our town who feel very frustrated with our police. They feel very disrespected, and I want to acknowledge that, and I also want to encourage us all on the dais and whoever's here to think about that, because these things start with these small microaggressions and these small individual encounters that harbor more resentment and frustration, and then this era we live in where people are frustrated by a lot of things that the city of Evanston have no control over. I would like us to really take seriously that a lot of people in our city feel like they're almost at the boiling point with their frustrations. And I think that even though some of it is out of our control, we have to take it very seriously, and I hope that at our next Human Services meeting, we have some very strong messaging for our police in terms of how we want our citizen base to be treated, and I hope that our citizen base will be activated and trust that we are listening, trust that I am listening, and to not get to that boiling point, that we, as a city, have to make a commitment to really work on this issue.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, Alderman, fine. Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things tomorrow, a new city committee meeting. The time, instead of 7:00, when we usually start, it will be at 7:30. It will be in the Aldermanic Library. Our agenda keeps growing, so come on along if you have not attended that meeting before. It should be a good discussion. And I'd like to make a suggestion that we rework a slightly larger room to allow us to have more informal discussions where, instead of sitting in front of this beautiful dais, we're actually down on the, on the regular folks, and I think that will facilitate discussion, whether it's here or in the parasol room or wherever, that we really look at establishing that type of venue to have discussions like this that I think are really important, whether they're police issues or affordable housing issues or development issues, that we get down with our, with our folks and get to work. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to offer a word of condolences to the family of Lionel Jean Baptiste and Jean Paul Lenore. His mother passed this past weekend, wonderful, wonderful lady, the adhesive to the whole family. So again, condolences. The funeral services will be this weekend. And then, again, to those that are tuning in, just worth mentioning again, the Second Ward meeting that was, this week was canceled due to, or it should have been rescheduled due to the fact that I have CBDG hearings for the rest of the month, and so I will be following up with our staff and residents to reschedule that meeting. Thank you.
Alderman Winn?
Yes, I would also like to offer my condolences to Lionel Jean Baptiste and his whole family on the passing of his mother-in-law. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
It was a sad week, I guess. About five years ago to the day, I was attending the dedication of Charlene Garfield Way in my ward, and to honor Charlene Garfield, and Charlene died on Friday, but a truly wonderful person. She made a lot of contributions in our community, and she is going to be greatly missed, so my condolences to her family. I did want to make a reference, I'd like to do this directly to the council instead of to Human Services, and hopefully this is okay, but if we go back a little bit in time and kind of along the lines of what Alderman Fleming was getting at, we've made some affirmative, I guess, directives and decisions as far as use of force and stop and frisk, you know, at points in time in the past. So I'd like to ask is that the Police Department provide us with a, just a brief presentation on, you know, what those two things are, you know, how those two things work in our community right now, so it can open that, and so we can open that up for a conversation. I think it's important for us to be open and honest about, you know, how this takes place, what it involves, what some of the statistics are, and not do it in a, you know, we don't do things in a gotcha fashion, but just, again, to have that honest conversation. Here's what we're doing, here's the context of these policies, and to consider and think about, you know, are we in the same place that we were in before? Has it worked? Has it not worked? Or what we need to be doing differently? So I think it's important to have that open, honest conversation about these, about these two points.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. I too would like to offer condolences to Mr. and Mrs. Jean Baptiste and their families. This week, we have our Fifth Ward meeting at Gibbs Morrison at 7:00 PM. We have a full agenda. Northwestern will be there giving an update on community engagement. We'll have Public Works there to respond to many questions and concerns we've had about debris in our alleys. We'll have the city managers' report and an update from the "we" program and the exciting new things that they're doing in the community. I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Saffron? Alderman Ravel? Alderman Rainey?
I want to remind everybody that on Wednesday, the 20th, is a very important meeting on disposal issues, garbage, and on the 24th of September, it's a very important event at St. Francis Hospital for families. Everybody who has a family, go to St. Francis, starting at 11:00 in the morning, all sorts of activities for people. And today, in the city of Chicago, Alderman Moore and I had a very large contingent of people who went to building court for the old Burger King on Howard Street. City of Chicago Law Department didn't quite serve the defendant properly, so we didn't quite get everything we needed, but we certainly made a huge impression on the court, and we were singled out, and we were really quite impressive with our crowd. And so things are going to really move along. And the Deputy Commissioner of Buildings came out this afternoon to the site and met with some of us who were on the bus this morning. So we're just, we really made a very big impression, and I think we're going to get a lot of action. So, thanks, everybody.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Sorry, I forgot one thing, public safety. So today we had an ETHS student riding in the bike lane, hit by a car crossing the street, and no one stopped. The driver didn't stop, and pedestrians did not stop, so on Dodge, where my children ride. So if we could just all, please be mindful and slow down, and if you see a child that did get hit, if we could stop and call the police for the child, please. But just really, please be mindful, they're trying their best. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Wilson, can you lead us into executive session?
Thank you. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, and C11.
Do I have a motion to recess?
No.
Excuse me?
A second for my motion to-
Oh, sorry.
I mean, in-
All right, yeah.
Executive session.
I need a second for executive session?
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to recess?
Into executive.
Into executive session.
Aye.
I'll get it at some point. Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.